I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River at 6:00 PM on Thursday, November 18th, 2021. We are meeting at one government center in the Fall River Hearing Room. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Michael Ferreira is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Hearing none. Our recording secretary this evening is Christine Alex, the lady to my right. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank, James Corkin, Joe Pereira, and Dan Dupere. Christine, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A is amended?
Yes.
I declare the November 18th, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on Zoning Board specific matters at the end of the meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new recodified edition approved by the Planning Board and City Council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, now with its red grapefruit cover, is the official copy. Any issues before we start? We'll start with Agenda Item Number One. Peter Vanco, A.I., I think it's AIA.
That's correct.
403 Division Street, Lot G484. This is a variance request to renovate the existing building, converting to 18 residential units with 18 parking spaces, waiving requirements in the A2 district. Good evening. You identify yourself for the record and tell us what you want to do.
Yes, good evening. My name is Peter Vanco. I'm with Vanco Studio Architects located at 407 Dudley Street in Boston. We are returning to you this evening with a case that was heard over the summer. It, at that time, was determined a need for additional parking and really getting as closer to a one-to-one ratio was the desire of the Board. We found a way to do that on the site and it was accomplished by infilling a light well that added light and windows to the basement. By doing so, my client and I feel that we have sufficiently found a way on the third sheet of the plan set that you have, Sheet A, excuse, 100. The most pertinent drawing of this plan set. The left side of that sheet, the gray hatched areas demonstrate 18 parking spaces. And there are 16 parking spaces contained in an upper lot. The infilled area of, is along the building edge that we were previously trying to stay away from, but structurally, we believe we can infill that and thereby create the spaces 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Similarly, we found two other spaces and they are on the lowermost edge of that sheet, Spaces 17 and 18. Those are accessed via an existing curb cut and we would be utilizing some portion of that yard for those two additional spaces. No changes are being proposed to the building from the standpoint of unit count, unit typology, anything like that. We still have 18 units in there. They are generally ones and two beds and this, the ratio now becomes a one-to-one ratio for parking to units. I don't want to belabor the design too much further. I understand that you all are familiar with it. You've seen it once before and eager to hear your thoughts and comments.
What was the action on the summer meeting?
Pardon me?
What was the Board's action on the summer meeting?
On the summer meeting, I think it was denied.
So then we have to take...
We had to do, yeah, we have to do, yes, we have to do a 40A, Section 16. Is there a substantial change, substantial material difference from what it was? And I think the, here because the Planning Board has already made that determination.
Correct.
Yes, and I, to clarify, the, we actually did have 20 units being proposed and 14 parking spaces, so it was, it was further off. We did combine two units so that we went down to 18. My apologies, I misspoke on a change in unit count. So, we did go down, so we did get ourselves to a one-to-one.
So, what the Planning Board had done in a meeting on August 11th, in the matter of the request submitted by Peter Vanco of Vanco Studio Architects on behalf of Lucian McPherson under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 16, and under Section 86, 4, 87 of the Zoning Board, the zoning bylaw for determination that a new proposal with respect to 403 Division Street contains specific and material changes in the conditions upon which previous unfavorable action had been taken by the Zoning Board of Appeals, namely the denial on May 20th, 2021, of a variance request to convert existing structure into 20 residential units providing 11 parking spaces waiving requirements in the A2 district. The new proposal is to renovate the existing building, converting to 18, so we have a reduction from 20 to 2, 18.
Correct.
Residential units with 18 parking spaces, providing a one-to-one ratio as Mr. Vanco waiving all zoning requirements in the A2 district. So, the Planning Board approved that unanimously in a four-to-zero vote. We, if we go on, go forward with it, have to make a similar determination before we can let this go forward if there's, if that is considered, the reduction from 20 to 18 and the parking spaces increase from 11 to 18 as being a substantial material change from the last proposal. So, if you want to take care of that first and see whether we go forward, we can do that. Go ahead, John. You were going to say something.
Audience, first of all.
No, well, this is...
Determining whether or not we go forward.
Determining whether or not we go forward.
Not making the motion that there has been a substantial material change.
Okay. So, John makes the motion for substantial material change. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay. So now we can go on to the substance. Members of the Board, any questions about this particular new proposal? Parking has go, who's that? I heard some voice on the cell.
No, just quickly, so your total new bedrooms is 20?
No. Total's down to 18, no.
No, not units, bedrooms.
Bedroom count is, here we have 18 and we have those twos. Yes, that would be correct.
So that's 20. Thank you.
I have 18 minutes, that's our only two beds.
Dan? No?
Leasing office is staffed full-time?
Yes.
It would be, yes. Just parking for that is just a question. On-street parking is available all the way around the outside of that.
Yes. That's correct. Nine to five hours...
Yes.
Hours of operation would probably be nine to five.
That's at the leasing office, it's a resi...
Correct.
Operation of the leasing office, some manager.
Precisely.
Nine to five, okay.
Yes.
Jim, anything?
No questions.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay.
Do you want to read letters?
I can't remember.
Just two.
There were two letters?
Yep, the memo from Bill and then the one from Kristen.
Okay. So, Christine is reminding me that we've got two things. Oh, I see. I printed mine and you brought some too, so let's, no, no, I'll use yours. So, we've got two things in favor. One is from Historical Commission. This is Kristin Quintero Olivera, Chairman of the Fall Historical Commission, addressed to Mr. Assad and Board members. The Fall of a Historical Commission is in unanimous support of a proposal for redevelopment of this old St. Louis school located at 403 Division Street. We understand that there are to be 18 residential units in the building and we feel that it will be a great use of a valuable property and hope to see it brought back to its former historic glory within the neighborhood where it sits. As we have seen in our recent past, far too many of our historic properties are being lost to the wrecking ball and every loss is a loss of part of the character of our beautiful city. We have just seen the unfortunate loss of the historic Nathaniel B. Boarding School and it would be a shame to lose yet another one. Not only will it serve to preserve an historic building, but will also benefit the neighborhood economically with the building being located nearby to many local restaurants and shops. The city's master plan is very clear regarding the importance of the preservation of our historic resources and we now have the chance to move forward with the plan to ensure we keep our identity going into the future. Fall River is a unique and beautifully historic city and its vitality, and it's vitally important to our continued success and future economic growth to preserve our assets. Now, the other item, Mr. Kenny's not here, but he wrote a memo to the Chair and to the members of the Board. The purpose of this memo was to suggest some factors that support the granting of the above referenced variance request. The request is for relief from the requirements of an A2 district to enable renovation of an existing vacant school building. This project was before the Zoning Board of Appeals in May of this year, at which time the proposal was for conversion of 20 residential units with 11 parking spaces. Relief was sought because the project would not have sufficient square footage, because there would be excessive lot coverage, and because of insufficient parking. The petition was denied. In August of this year, an amended plan was presented to the Planning Board proposing a reduction in residential units from 20 to 18 and an increase in parking spaces from 11 to 18. The Planning Board unanimously found that this represented a material change which made it possible for the applicant to appear before you now. I suggest that following factors support granting the variance. There is clearly hardship based on the character of the existing structure, which is a legitimate factor to consider in determining whether hardship exists. The structure is obsolete. It's an abandoned former school building. There is no market for its restoration as a school and bringing this old structure into compliance with existing codes applicable to schools is problematical. It is difficult to imagine any use other than residential for this large structure in its residential neighborhood. Without a variance to proceed with renovation for residential, which is the most appropriate for the neighborhood, the building will remain vacant and will deteriorate, a detriment to the neighborhood. Without a variance, the building may ultimately be demolished. Appropriate reuse of an existing structure rather than demolition and deposit of potentially reusable materials into the landfill is almost always the environmentally prudent, less wasteful cause to follow. The revised proposal reducing the number of residential units is a reasonable response to the Board's concern about the density of development in this neighborhood. Further reduction, given the expense and renovation of this obsolete aging building, would likely make it economically impossible to proceed. The revised proposal increasing the number of on-street parking spaces from 11 to 18 while reducing the number of residential units is a major improvement, given the existing coverage of the structure on the lot. It's difficult to imagine how any further increase in on-street parking might be possible. The new proposal allocates one parking space per residential unit. The residential units will be attractive to individual tenants or small family units, likely to have lower demand for parking than larger family units. It appears that there is some available on-street parking within two or more blocks of the project, which should be adequate to support this project. The project is a short walk to Kennedy Park. Renovation of existing properties for residential use near to such amenities is a valuable planning goal. I trust this will be of some value to the Chair and members in deliberating on this matter. Respectfully submitted, William G. Kenny, AICP, Director of Planning. So those are the only two corresponded things that we have?
Yes.
Okay. So now that we've got those into the record, is there any, I think I asked anyone in favor, anyone opposed? Members of the Board, what do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, based upon the recommendations of the Historic Commission and of Mr. Keating, I concur with their analysis and recommend approval of the proposal.
Grant the variance, okay. So, Jim Corkin makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
David Assad, yes. So that petition is granted. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Agenda Item Number Two. Mark Quintel, 444 June Street, Lot O1044. Variance and/or special permit request to construct a garage addition to an existing non-conforming multifamily structure that sits on a pre-existing non-conforming parcel of land, waiving requirements in the A2 district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a Senior Project Manager at SciTech CEC with addresses here in the city as well as Rainham, Massachusetts. As the Chairman stated, this is a petition on behalf of Mark Quintel, who is the real estate owner of the dwelling located at 444 June Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. This property falls within an A2 district. Let me get my plans, I can't see the one that's up there. And what we have is an existing multifamily dwelling that sits on the corner of French and June Street, as you see on the larger plan before you and the smaller plans that you all have before you. The applicant is proposing to construct a garage addition with some deck space above and some stairs that you see on the plan. It's a 15-by-20 garage that would be accessed via the existing driveway to the north side of the property. Very modest, small garage, one vehicle that could fit in that space and that would be that singular level, again with the garages above it. The relief that we're here seeking this evening is with regards to what would be defined as the rear yard setback. So in the A2 district, the rear yard setback requirement would normally be 30 feet. This is a corner lot, however, we always determine the side yard and rear yard depending upon what the street address is and what is claimed as frontage. So this is technically a June Street address, which would require that rear yard to be 30. If this was a French Street address, we would have a side yard of 20, so the relief at that point would be, would be less. So when I met with Mr. Quintel regarding this proposed addition, he currently has no garage on the property and he does park a few vehicles in the existing driveway and there's plenty of parking on June and French, although French is a fairly steep street and parking is not necessarily maybe a great idea. I've parked on there and used my emergency brake a few times, but it's pretty steep. And that steepness is part of the reason why we come to you with regards to some of this relief. You'll see the topography that we've added to this site plan where we have a very large topographical relief from the existing structure and driveway to the westerly boundary of the property. When I met with Mr. Quintel, I gave him a couple of options. He could build a detached garage being four feet from the side property line and six feet from the house. So basically taking that structure or an even larger one, sliding it over to within four feet of the existing dwelling that abuts as running down French Street. And that's allowable under the zoning bylaw for detached garage structures. As you can see with the topography, sliding it even further west would create an even greater hardship for us to construct that structure because of the elevation difference and how steep that driveway would be and how high we would need to raise that garage structure. So what I explained to him was that it would most likely be worth attempting to come before the Zoning Board of Appeals and attach that garage structure to the building. That would allow us to keep the building away from the down gradient abut, not deal with that severe slope, and still accomplish the same means. But what I explained to him was that we do need zoning relief in order to do that. So I would offer that, the fact that we have a corner lot with specific setbacks that we need to hold, the existing topography of the site really logistically requires that we propose this garage in the location that we have. It's a modest-sized garage, where you see the stairs set that we have proposed on the side of it.
Really, the only waiver you need is just the rear yard.
That would be correct, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
And this would go through site plan review because when we're dealing with this grade, you know, drainage and runoff concerns are in fact a concern and those items would be addressed through site plan review. As you see on the plan, we would end up building a terrace, kind of a wall situation to bring us up to the appropriate elevation, but this would allow us from keeping that proposed garage four feet from that property line.
So, the garage attached to the house will probably have an entrance into the first floor?
That's correct. Because right now, there's a little bit of a walkout basement.
And the decking you're talking about is just a roof deck on top of the garage?
That's correct. So that would, any decking would be within the envelope of the proposed addition.
Of the proposed.
Nothing would extend beyond that proposed roof area.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, the, I could understand why the Building Inspector sent you here, but on the Brooklyn, I'm thinking it's just a small-scale addition.
If it was something that we were projecting along the existing, like, for instance, the property line to the north, you can see we're existing 15.6. So we don't need relief when we're just projecting along that non-conforming setback.
No, no, I'm just...
But we are becoming more non-conforming and that's why he required this to come to you.
That's why I bring up the Brooklyn case and say, you know, that's exactly what they talked about, non-conforming, non-conforming, single garage being, do you even, questioning, do you even need to come before the Zoning Board for that relief? It wasn't a large-scale improvement. But you're here and you've got both variance and special permit and I think variance is probably the way to go with it.
When we initially filed, I was hoping that once the final survey was completed, that the existing structure would be closer than 30 feet, but it's 30.7.
Okay.
So that seven-tenths of a foot is the difference between requesting a special permit or a variance.
Okay. So let's see, Members of the Board, any questions before I, go ahead, Dan.
Does this bring your lot coverage up?
It's already non-conforming, so, I mean...
So you need relief on that too?
Yes, technically. I don't know the exact number, but it would be the footprint of what's proposed on this plan. There would be no greater lot coverage allowed. And then when we deal with site plan review, they will require some roof drain dry wells to be installed and we have room to do that.
Yeah, which brings me to my question. You've got a pretty severe slope here.
Absolutely. Yeah, so as you can see, we've actually, we've gone through the effort of, you'll see there's two retaining walls that I've shown along the westerly boundary. What they're going to do is terrace a wall, three-foot-high walls, a terrace with some plantings, another terrace. When you look directly across the street, actually a number of the homes on this street have all done this terracing of walls. I think this will probably be the best one on the street because a lot of people have done it with a very high wall rather than terrace it with shorter walls, but that's what they're...
So that's what you're taking to the Planning Board, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Through site plan review.
So those are the two waivers, rear yard, 15 feet and lot coverage. Okay. John? Jim? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? I know we received some communicate, I think this is the only one. I rece, the Board received an email from Mr. Anton Dias. Hi Christine, questions?
It's the second paragraph.
So the second paragraph is really, we don't need the love notes there. While I do not object to the property owner constructing their garage, the property is a contributing structure to the Highlands Historical District and due to the structure being seen from June and French Street, I would ask that the Fall of a Historical Commission review the design so that it will be harmonious with the historical structure at 444 June Street. So...
If I can respond quickly to that?
Yeah, you can.
I don't believe this structure falls within the historic district, so the Historic Commission does not have any technical jurisdiction over it. So I would ask that the Board don't just grant a generic variance that throws this in their hands. This is, if you look, if you've been out there, this general...
Let me stop you. The Board, when you say a generic variance, if we grant a variance, you get, you get a variance to put the...
I don't want it to have a condition up to what the Historic Commission agrees to know.
No.
Right. So I would want to voice my opposition.
This is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I just want to make sure that his request...
There are other boards that may want to get involved and they can do it at their own time.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have to add anything else, then.
Thank you. That's it, there's nothing else, no other communications. Okay. So that's what we have at 444 June Street. Motion to grant, motion to deny. Have they met the burden of shape, topography, soil condition, small scale?
No question about the topography. I move approval of the variance.
All right, Jim Corkin's motion to approve.
I'll second.
I heard stereo there. All right. All right, I heard Dan Dupere, so second by Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, so that petition is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda, okay, Agenda Item Number Three. I can listen to, I'll ask Jim Corkin, the Chair, this particular item. Dan, you're going forward.
Yes.
Agenda Item Number Three is a petition from Daniel Crone and Kathy Starr, Michael Martins and Raymond DeMello Jr. for 783, 795 Rock Street, Lots Oat 4, 22, and 23. And the variance request to reconfigure the existing parcel of land in order to eliminate an existing encroachment, a garage, waiving the requirements in the S District.
Good evening. And again, for the record, my name is Dan Aguirre, Senior Project Manager at SciTech CEC with addresses here in the city as well as Rainham, Massachusetts.
Dan, just one, just for the record, we are working with the four-member Board...
That is correct.
And we offer you the opportunity to go forward or to delay till we have approval.
Certainly. So this is real estate of two separate properties, 795 Rock Street and 783 Rock Street, where bisecting the two of these structures has been an existing driveway that access to the rear of the property where you see the existing garage. The parcel line that runs in between these two properties, and you have it on the plan before you. So we have a driveway in this location. This is the existing property line. And it bisects that existing garage. And over a number of years, everyone had a general understanding of, yes, we understand that, we use this bay, you guys use that bay. Property came up for sale recently and they had always had a discussion that, okay, if the property ever comes up for sale, we need to resolve this, one for the title, for the new people buying the home, and it makes sense at this point to have one person own the garage structure. So the proposal before you this evening is to create a new lot line in between the two parcels that will wrap around the side of the garage, being no closer than four feet, which is the required setback for a garage structure, and convey what we have shown as Parcel A to the real estate at 795 Rock Street, which owns the driveway and owns two-thirds of the garage already. So it makes sense to convey that remaining portion. The reason we're here is that both parcels are already pre-existing non-conforming. This technically will make the parcel at 783 Rock even more... This technically will make the parcel at 783 Rock even more nonconforming by 707 square feet. So the process is that we do need to come before you first before we can file the subdivision plan with the planning board. So the hardship is clearly that we have an existing structure that straddles a lot line. How it got there, it's very old, beautiful carriage house looking structure, but only a garage, there's no second floor, there's no apartments, there never would be, that can easily be a condition if the board wanted to add that. But this is strictly to resolve this encroachment issue so that the home at 783 can be sold without any title issue. If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Dan, that would leave 783 without any driveway?
That is correct, yeah. Which, right now, they don't technically, they don't have the driveway, right? So there was no tech, there was nothing in either deed.
No.
That said that the driveway can be used by 783. So no, this will now, this driveway will be, and it's only a singular lane driveway, will be strictly for 795, which it really has been. The property owners at 783 have used the space for storage, but not for vehicles.
Okay, so it has not been considered as a shared driveway between these two properties?
No.
And will not be now?
No, no. It'll still be singularly owned.
Okay.
Try to make it as simple as possible.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
No, it's a tough street for parking anyway, so.
John?
Yes.
Okay, is anyone in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? No comments, so do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant?
Second.
Secondly, John Frank. John, Frank, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Jim Corkins?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We needed all four of you, so that was good. Thank you for coming.
It's the tie, Dan, it's the tie.
We gotta go find the chairman, I just, oh, here he comes.
Agenda item number four, ASE Investments LLC, 69R Alden Street, Lot J 279. Variance and special permit request to allow construction of a 33 unit apartment building with associated parking at a rate of two spaces per unit and utilities, waiving requirements in the CMD Commercial Mill District.
Good evening, again, for the record, Dan Aguirre from SciTech CEC, here this evening on behalf of ASE Investments LLC, who owns the real estate at 69R Alden Street. You all know this property as the former home of the Parker Candy Company, and this petition probably looks somewhat familiar to you all. This was before you in a little bit different manner and approved back on February 20th of 2020, which technically is a month before COVID shutdown, before all of the permits and boards and everybody else were put on hold. So the petition before you this evening, as the chairman stated, is for the construction of a three story, 33 unit apartment building with 67 parking spaces, exceeding the required number of parking spaces for a residential unit, which is two to one. So we've met the parking requirement, that's the first part. But what I'd like to focus on is explain to you the difference between the previous application and this one, and what brings us here to you this evening. So back in February, the board approved the variance and special permit for the multifamily development, which is a special permit portion of it, and the variant portion was for a parcel of land that lacks frontage on a city street. And at that time, we went through the iteration of this 30 foot way, provides access to, out to Alden Street, and we got past that. That zoning relief is still in place. After we received zoning relief from this board, we filed with and appeared before the Fall River Conservation Commission and Department of Climate and Protection, and secured the construction permits for building this project. Once that permit was in place, we then applied to the City of Fall River for site plan review. As the chairman stated, there are multiple permitting agencies that you need to go through after this board has rendered a decision. We went through that process, and we received an approval letter from the city as well for site plan review and construction of this 16 unit townhouse building with associated parking that runs around the site. Again, for orientation purposes, if you don't remember, this is the Quikashan River, and the proposed new spur of the Quikashan rail trail would run right along the backs of these buildings, to the point where you could step out of your deck and within five feet beyond the rail trail, similar to like some of the homes in Bristol where you're right on top of that. So the applicant was in the process of moving forward with construction, where I think maybe a month and a half, two months ago, we were invited to a neighborhood meeting at the Flint Neighborhood Association, I believe it was at Spur de Santo School, I believe that's the school that's down on Alden Street. So we appeared there to answer any questions the planner had asked me to attend, which I agreed to, just to see if anybody had any generic questions about the project. Well, during that discussion, there was concern raised about parking, families moving into this neighborhood, these would have been three bedroom units, and there was a great discussion about different type of housing in this neighborhood, so it wasn't a great feel from what we had. Now, the project was completely permitted, and I explained that to everyone. I said, but I will take the concerns that you have, and I will go speak to the owner of the property who's here this evening, and I offered to him, why don't you think about doing this, maybe to address their concerns? Similar project, but different in some respect. So what we ended up coming up with was this proposal for a singular building with adequate parking. Now, these would be 750 to 800 square foot units, mostly one bedrooms, maybe one in an office, or maybe some would be twos, if we could get some down on the corner, but no three bedroom townhouses that we could fill up with eight to 10 people, you know, in a family. So an entirely different market target for a building like this with apartments, entirely different than what was previously permitted. So when we look at the project itself, we back in, okay, how big of a building can we put in? Can we provide enough parking? So that's how we back into where we are, meeting all of the building setbacks which we have, meeting the popular requirements that we have. But the biggest thing, and it seemed like the biggest concern for many people that I spoke to, Mr. Joe Cavallo being one of them, that I spoke to about a week ago about this proposal, this proposal will still utilize the rail trail as an amenity. However, we feel that it won't be such an imposition to the rail trail where you could have viewed the townhouses as. So you would have independent homeowners or condominium owners, that would be, six of them, that would be basically on top of the rail trail. This project would allow for this construction activity to take place, the rail trail would be built in this location, and pull the living part of this project a little bit away from the rail trail, allowing it to continue on during its construction. So there is an easement in place, it's shown up on all of our plans through site plan review, the conservation commission, and this new zoning plan. So we feel that this new proposal answers a few of the questions that the neighborhood group had. And actually, I spoke with one of the members of the rail trail and the bike group just before the meeting, and once I gave him this explanation, he agreed with me wholeheartedly that this proposal is clearly better for this neighborhood, where we have, you know, the knitting mills apartments here and the curtain walls here, another apartment style building would be a little bit more in keeping than if we built townhouses in the middle of their parking lots. So he agreed to the point where, he said, I don't need to say, I agree with everything you said. So he ended up leaving. But if anybody has any other questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them, or if any neighbors or butters have any concerns. But you can clearly see that this project, we feel, would be even less detrimental than the project that was previously approved through all of the different agencies, and permits are still valid. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
No, no, I know that this young lady is here, I know that I think on this side, there's lots of people that want to speak, I don't know if there's anybody on this side. So I'll start with, well, okay, yeah, yeah, I'll start with the board, members of the board, do you have any questions about this particular project? Dan, no, Joe? John?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Outside space.
Outside, green space?
Yeah, well, it doesn't look like there's any green space. Is there green space behind abutting the rail trail?
Yes, so, and even on, even on.
Wait, 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 everybody will get an opportunity to speak.
On the previously approved plan as well, this is all to be open green space, permitted through the conservation commission. So on this new plan, this would now be, there were structures.
Yeah.
It's a, now it's going to be.
Yeah, yeah, here. So through this design, we've carved out green space here, this will be the rail trail, this will be green space. Again, in this parking design, we've added green space landscaped islands throughout the entire project. And again, much more landscaping than what you see on the abutting properties for landscaping. So yes, there is a large amount of green space, and site plan review will dictate, just like it had with the apartments, specific plantings, where they are, trees, shrubs, and how those areas are to be handled.
Jim? No? Okay. So, members of the board, you can always ask other questions if you want, so let me see. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Okay, is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Yes.
I know you are. So do you want the first word or the last word in opposition? So I'm going to start in the back, I'll move forward.
Oh, you mean from here?
Yeah, I mean.
I can speak.
I know you can. So go ahead, address the board, tell me who you are, tell me why you're here, and what your concerns are.
My name's Jeannie Santos. I'm concerned about this project. First, I do have a question for Mr. Aguirre, what is the lot size in there?
This lot size is 68,000 square feet.
So, okay, 68,000 square, so it's a little, it's about an acre and a core.
Yeah, 43,560 is an acre.
I know that.
Sure.
I saw real estate for 36 years, so I know that. So this lot of land is of.
Jeannie, can I have your address, please?
69 Alden Street.
Okay. Go ahead, please, continue.
This little piece of land is nestled between two elderly mill complex, one is about 125 and one is about 100. It's only a right of way to go down to the property, that's how they would have to access this. It's an historic, as far as I understand, it's an historic district, it's within 100 feet of the water, I think they're asking to eliminate that with the special permit. It's already so congested there right now, I mean, I'd be worried about fire trucks, it's a right of way to get down to their property, even when it's being built, with construction, with the machinery that they would need, things like that. And it's elderly people, this is not a place for families, for condos, it's taken away from the trail. It's not, yeah, it's going to be nice for the condo owners, well, what about the rest of the city? I think that the board should table this, go look at this, and you're going to see how small this is and how it's nestled in between, not to mention, as far as I know, there's no 21E done on this property yet. Maybe you can correct me, but I don't think that's.
This is the zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Aguirre. But there's so, there's so many, so many issues.
It's a development issue, the only singular issue before the board is, do we like this proposal? Can we grant the relief that they're looking for to build this singular unit with 33 units in it or?
And 67 parking spaces?
That's what's on the plan, 67 parking spaces, right? One to one? Two to one?
Two to one.
Two to one.
Can I respond like a butter, like a butter by a time? First of all, and I've known Ms. Santos for a while, so you live at the knitting mills apartments?
Mm-hmm.
So you rent there?
Yes.
Okay. When we went through this permitting the first time, the property owner of the mill came out in opposition to this project, and it was brought to his attention that with the improvements of his mill project, same relief that we're seeking was granted, that they constructed a number of items within this 30 foot right of way. We don't need to go through all of that again, because that relief technically is still in place, regardless of what the zoning relief is. The zoning relief for this type of a structure is a special permit, that is not substantially more detrimental than the surrounding neighborhood. So the knitting mills apartments and the curtain walls apartments both received similar relief for multifamily structures in this zoning district, at parking rates of one space per unit, not two spaces per unit. And when those items were brought to light during the meeting, the gentleman who owned the building clearly understood that what our requests were, were reasonable. And I can understand, as tenants, people still have the same concerns, but they don't, because they live in that neighborhood, they don't necessarily own the building, but they do have concerns because they live there. That's why we have ensured that we have not asked for parking relief. Because even though they may have proposed spaces at one to one, is that enough? I don't know, maybe the tenants could tell me. But we wanted to make sure that our project met the zoning requirements with no zoning relief, anticipating that that would be a concern from neighbors that, well, we can't find somewhere to park, we don't want them using our parking spaces, which are already de minimis from what is required by the bylaw. So with regards to the kind of relief that we're asking, very similar to the relief that's been granted. With regards to the abutting properties and in keeping, we have a project already approved that I agree to some extent is less desirable than another apartment use, and that we listened to those concerns at a neighborhood meeting, that I didn't need to go to, it was a courtesy to go answer questions, and that we were brought, they just don't want anything constructed. So I take those concerns to the owner, we come up with a new design to try and answer some of their questions, and it, I guess, clearly it's still not enough. So we could just go build the townhouses, but we all think, and the planner included, that this is a better project for this neighborhood in this area adjacent to this trail. We're not asking for any type of waiver with regards to any buffer zone activities.
The petition has variance and special permit, what was the variance?
The variance is still for the lot, technically, the variance is still good for constructing on a lot that doesn't have frontage, so it's just repetitive.
So that, so the variance part has to do with the waiver of the frontage?
That's correct. Both projects, that's the same.
Except this particular lot, as I remember the title to it, you've got the land court group that comes from Alden Street that gives you the access down, in my recollection, for 120 Quikashan Street, that has, there is the right of way that Parker Candy enjoyed that comes from Quikashan Street to that lot in the back.
That is correct, and we went through that to a very, an exhaustive extent.
No, no, I just, that's my recollection about the access to this particular property, but the biggest one was the land court piece.
That's correct.
That came down from Alden Street, and there was, there were those encroachments from the development of the knitting mills into the.
Everyone uses this 30 foot right of way.
So you get rid of the townhouses, you put them all into one monolith, and you've got six, you know, however, 33 units?
Right.
And you've got 67 off-street parking spaces around there, adding some greenery to it.
Any permits that we need with regards to the conservation commission and site plan review, we have to go through that process.
No, no, I'm not, those other boards, those other.
Ms. Santos had a concern about we were asking for some waiver of 100 feet, we're not asking for anything to do with.
Nothing to do with this board.
Right, exactly.
If there are other boards or other, you have to jump through those, go through those requirements and licensing, it's just this board, whether or not for the special permit, whether this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what we've got proposed or what's going on there.
Or what could be there at all, yeah.
Well, it could be a commercial, it could be a commercial mill that gets.
That's right, right, which may not be great in the middle of these parking lots.
No, no, but I'm just saying, where it's zoned, I mean, that zoning line, and I'm just infinitely familiar with that.
I know you are. We're not going to get back to that.
We're not going to get back there, no. But, you know, you've got A2, you've got the commercial mill district, and you've got the rail trail that goes through there that's being developed, this is, I don't know, I look at it and say this is kind of consistent with the development of the knitting mills and the curtain walls, but anyway, that's.
And every other mill going down Alden.
Jeannie, go ahead, go ahead, keep talking, tell me some more.
Is it age requirement? Is it age requirement?
No, no.
Not by this board, this board.
This is nestled, a tiny little piece nestled between these two big mills.
Correct.
That, and the two big mills are 62 and older.
No, correct.
55.
55 and older.
55.
And again, as a concession.
But that was the development, that had nothing to do with this board.
It's our intention with smaller units and lesser bedroom count that we would automatically not lend itself to. that we would automatically not, not lend itself to families or multiple, you know, it would be a much more-
But that's, but that's a development decision, that's not the zoning board. The zoning board decision is, can I build it or can't I do it? Can I put conditions on? I don't know whether or not we can get into, I really don't want people over 55 or-
At, at the neighborhood meeting, it was suggested very strongly, and it's, I'm sure it's recorded somewhere, that they did not want children in this neighborhood.
No, I remember that from the last one, that was a big one.
Well, at the neighborhood meeting, it was even more so. So we heated, we heated down it.
But I mean, that's not something the board's gonna, will entertain.
I can promise you that it would be no more than two-bedroom units, most of them would be ones, so you could limit the development to two-bedroom units. That's, that's 100% guaranteed.
Okay. Jeannie, go ahead.
Can the board table and look at this property?
The board has power to do everything, but is there a reason to table it? I don't think so.
If you see the situation-
The board, no, wait, wait, just let me speak for the board for a minute. It, it's, to think that the board hasn't gone out there and understands where this is, is wrong. Every member of this board is familiar with this particular project and every item on the agenda. The chairman in particular is very aware of where this sits and where it exists. So I, the, this board does not need anybody, any other board involved in the decision of what we need to make on this. They may be, they may be involved when the permitting process happens, but it's certainly not for the zoning board to say, I want some other board to make a decision for this board. I mean, they have to go through the permitting process. This board is just one step in that process. You know that. Good, some more. Who else is in opposed? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I have a question that's bike path access. Are they actually ever gonna build that? Not even, to me, that's just a, um, place for the homeless.
Sir, the zoning board of appeals, I have no idea what's gonna happen in that.
I can respond quickly, so-
But that's for the homeless people, just gonna-
So there is an easement across our property, the knitting mills property, the curtain lofts, all the way through to Travasso's Park-
Yep.
-for the potential construction of another spur of the bike trail. Mr. Kenny has made sure that none of our construction activity falls within this easement. It's an easement. They can do, they can build a bike path within it. That does not preclude us from using the remainder of our land.
No.
Clearly. So is it ever gonna get built? From what I hear with ARPA funds, I think it's probably more of a reality than it was two years ago. Two years ago, I would've said there's probably no way that, that the state is gonna send more money down for more bike trails, and as wonderful as they are, and I use them a lot, but without the ARPA funding, this probably would not have gotten built. But I think it's gonna get built, and I think it'll be an amenity to all of the, all of the development in this area.
And allow the homeless people to come from behind Wal-Mart to get over.
Right, and I know that was a discussion at the neighborhood meeting as well, because the police were there as well, listening to about that, and, you know, the more development you put in, the better chance you have of ridding the area of homeless.
Good. Sir, can I have your name and address, please?
Bruce Gaylord, 69 Alden.
Okay, thank you. Sir? No? Madam? Madam? No? I'll get to you, yep. All right, anybody else on this side? Jeannie, anything else you wanna say?
No.
Okay, sir?
Hello, my name is Skylar Kelly. I work for State Representative Paul Schmidt as the community outreach liaison. I just wanna thank the board for taking their time and Mr. Aguirre for coming as well. I just wanna state for the record, the representative is neither for nor against the project as of the moment. We would just like to enter into the record that we have some concerns that have been brought to our attention as we represent the district where both curtain loft and knitting mill apartments reside, and alongside Carol Fioles, State Representative of the 6th Bristol District, who has several residents and family members who are in her district that live at those apartments, everything that was just said. We do have also concerns that we are working on several projects. I have worked for the representative for almost five years, and there are several projects that we are trying to get through each year in regards to safety of along the walkway towards the Walmart. And one of the things that was brought to our attention is if there is more, an increase in traffic, both pedestrian, car, what have you, in the area due to a development, that that would become infinitely more dangerous, and I understand that, you know, it has been addressed, and Mr. Aguirre has done a good job at addressing it. However, we are here to represent the folks that have come to our office and to make that claim, so we just wanna make sure that, you know, whatever projects or whatever variances have happened since the neighborhood meeting, that we have that details, we have all the details, so we can more effectively represent the folks that, you know, come to us with these issues. So we would just like to request any kind of details or projects so we can better assist the folks that have these issues.
Okay, thank you. I mean, short of, you know, some, the state coming up with some money and having an eminent domain taken if you say you don't want-
I mean, it'd be a great, be a great project for ARPA funding just to buy the whole property.
No, 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 what I'm saying-
I don't make those decisions in this bill.
No, no, neither do I, but I'm saying, I have someone who, there was a structure, there was a fire, the building burned down, there was a sale, I think the city, I think it was the city-
The city sold it.
The city took it, the city sold it. Somebody owns the property, they wanna develop it. We've granted a variance to do one project that seems to have gotten some resistance. Based on the resistance, it's been reconfigured in a different fashion. I don't know, I mean, but that's really the alternative. I've got it, I wanna develop it, no, you can't develop it, you wanna take it and buy it from me, then maybe an eminent domain taken happens, but other than that, this board is confronted with, I have a property, I wanna develop it, I'm confronted with shape, topography, soil conditions, I'm confronted with granting of a special permit, is this more detrimental to the neighborhood than what we've got? The, the deeds, as I'm reco, as I'm remembering, the easements, they weren't created recently, they were created, I think, 1895.
It was truly in court, I mean, a very, very long time ago, yes.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, my recollection, it's not something that was created recently with the current owner. This was historically how it was, and I just know from this, Quikashan Street and Assad are almost synonymous there.
And, and something, something very important is that, so you'll see shaded in gray is the 30-foot way, and the one at the top runs straight up to Alden Street.
Yeah, no, it goes right up.
But what's very important is, is that this 30-foot right-of-way straddles the lot line.
Yeah, no.
So both properties on either side of us utilize our land, utilizing the easement that they have rights to.
Correct.
Same right-of-way that we have rights to. So everyone has the same rights to utilize this 30-foot way, both sides of us, as well as ourselves.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not an exclusive easement, it's shared, everybody uses it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of order. We, we have a previous plan that's approved-
Yes.
-and could be built tomorrow, if they chose to.
They already pulled up permits.
Does this then, if this is approved, supersede that, or does it become an either-or?
Neither, it's on top of, or-
It's an either-or.
That's the only clarification I wanted. So if we approve this, we give them an option of which-
Give an option to go forward with this, and if not, they go back with this one that's already been permitted.
Unless we say-
Unless we say, you know, you can't do it, pull it, yeah, you cannot, no, we have, we have that power to say, we'll grant this one, but you rescind the other one. I mean, that certainly, you have that power to do.
That's why I asked.
What I would offer is that, because of the additional permitting that needs to take place beyond this board, doing away with the previously approved project, for some reason, through the Conservation Commission permitting or through site plan review permitting, we were unable to permit this singular building, then we would not have the previously permitted project. We can only build one, but until we get through-
You can only build one-
There are too many unknowns.
But the, but the variable of rescinding what you've already gotten permits for, the board can certainly do that, I'm not gonna say you can't, but I mean, the unintended consequences of it are such that it just may end everything.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Members of the board, you've heard the presentation. Yes, who? Yes, sir?
That's gonna be 69R? I just don't wanna get mail from, you know.
I don't, I don't-
Well, right now, it's listed as 69R. The board could make a condition that the city issue it a new number for clarification purposes, so that, because now the use is so different-
Why would you get mail at 69?
Well, 'cause people put R, don't put R, and, you know.
Oh.
We'll deal with a 911 coordinator. If we get to that point, we'll deal with a 911 coordinator in the city.
It's either engineering or 911, that's out of our purview.
It's not, it's not zoning board, yeah, but let the planning board deal with it. Okay. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, thank you, thank you for the, so I got two, the two letters, thank you. She's supposed to have a pen and stick me. So we've got two, two letters, let's see. So this one is from Alfred J. Lima, dated November 17th, directed to the board. Dear Chairman Assad, I wish to request that the 33-unit apartment building, so Al Lima, 488 Hood Street, 4 of MS, that's where Al lives. I wish to request that the 33-unit apartment building on Alden Street be denied by the zoning board of appeals. The renovations of the two of the granite old mill buildings on either side of that lot would detract from the historical significance of the area. These buildings were recently restored at great cost, new construction that would detract from these buildings should not be allowed. The Phase IV of the Quikashan rail trail, River Rail Trail, will be abutting lot J279 and will be a major addition to the attraction of the area for residents on the two residential granite buildings and for other residents of the city. That bike path will extend from Britland Park to Father Travasso's playground. That rail trail has recently been designed, yeah, designed and will be constructed as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Many questions have been involved in the planning for the Phase IV of the Quikashan River Rail Trail. We have spent many volunteer hours on expanding the rail trail. It would be extremely distressing to see this historic area be def, be defiled by sitting new apartment building in the area. If the ASE Investments wants to site a new building on the site, the commercial mill district now provides many options to choose from. As a volunteer group that has worked to make Florida a better place, we hope that the zoning board of appeals will deny this petition. Thank you, Alfred J. Lima. The next item that we will see was an email from a Mr. Joseph F. Cavalo, dated 11/14/2021 at 5:21 PM, to the zoning board of appeals. I am the vice president of the Flint Neighborhood Association, I reside at 575 Eastern Avenue. I am writing in opposition to the ASE Investment LLC request for a variance and special permit to allow construction of a 33-unit apartment building, waiving requirements in the CMD district. I am requesting that my objections be entered into the record, since I will be hospitalized following major surgery on Monday, November 15th, and unable to attend the zoning board of appeals meeting scheduled for Thursday. I base my opposition to this project on the numerous objections that the residents of both the knitting mills apartments and the curtain lofts have voiced at the Flint Neighborhood Association meetings, even calculating, even circulating petitions and garnering signatures to oppose this project. Issues addressed have included public safety, given the additional 68 parking spaces proposed, and the increased vehicular traffic for an elderly population, a tenants residing in the knitting mills and the curtain lofts, the frequent pooling of water in the current parking lot, given the drainage, water and sewer influx of 33 apartment building, similar to the flooding in Stafford Square. Yet another issue for the tenants is what, what the encroachment of the 100-foot buffer to the Quikashan River and the Alfred J. Lima Quikashan River Rail Trail, and how the encroachment will negatively impact the fauna, flora, and wildlife for both the Quikashan River and the Alfred J. Lima Quikashan River Rail Trail. The residents and the members of the Flint Neighborhood Association have been told of soil testing that has allegedly been performed, but have not as yet been made public. It is on the basis of the numerous adverse impacts that we ask that the request for the variance in special permit be denied. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation in this matter. Respectfully submitted, Joseph F. Cavalo. If there's nothing else, I think those are the only two I saw. Yep. So, that's what we have. Members of the board, motion to grant, motion to deny, I think we should have two.
We have, yeah.
You gotta have the, okay, so.
On the special permit, our first finding has to be whether or not we find it less detrimental or-
Substantially more detrimental.
Yeah. And I think that the changes that were made have been made to alleviate some of the concerns, and therefore it is less detrimental than the previously approved plan.
Okay, so Jim Corkins makes a motion concerning the special permit, that this particular proposal is less detrimental to the neighborhood than the current proposal or current action that's taking place there. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, would that, with supporting this motion, therefore preclude the previously granted relief?
No, why?
Just asking.
No, 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 what, so Tom, listen, I'm not that-
No, 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 no.
I gotta get, I gotta understand where you're going procedurally, if we grant-
We have the townhouse, we have the townhouse issue.
Townhouse is already approved and done.
That's completely approved.
Done.
So by supporting this particular motion-
And saying that this is-
Then preclude, we're just saying that it's less, it's not, it's no more detrimental.
Not more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there.
Right.
Well, no, no, well, I think the, the mix-up is, you're acting on not, not substantially more detrimental-
Yeah.
...to the neighborhood, having nothing to do with the previously approved project. You're not comparing it to the previously project.
No, nothing to do with it.
In your head, you may, but this is standalone by itself-
Yeah.
-and, and the statue is substantially not more detrimental than other uses that could take place in the commercial mill district.
And remember, it's the commercial mill district.
Yep, so looking at this in and of by itself, if that's all that represents, then I've got a satisfactory answer.
Then you're, then you're voting yes on Jim's motion?
Yes, I am.
Yes. Okay, Dan DePere?
Yes.
Okay, Chairman Assad, yes. So the special permit part of it, and now for the variance part, which is a waiver of the frontage or the street access, because you've got that right-of-way coming in, or the easement-
Motion to grant?
Motion to grant, John Frank, any discussion?
Second.
Second, Joe Parry?
With the condition-
With the condition-
That this is the plan.
Oop.
There's no secondary.
What does that mean, second?
I'll wait for my second.
The townhouses are out.
Okay.
Can I speak with my client for two minutes?
Yes.
It's the same, in my opinion, it's the same thing as saying, we're gonna build a three-family house, wait, we're gonna build a four-family house, wait, we're gonna build a five-family house, and then we're gonna decide what we're gonna do when we feel like it.
I understand, but this is-
I can't agree with that, I don't-
No, no, okay, wait a minute.
And that's fine, but I may just withdraw the application or ask to if my client doesn't wanna make that determination.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Neighborhood Association was the one that-
I know, so I don't wanna create a headache for my client.
Okay, stop. We'll take, ask, ask your client-
Great.
-before we go on, this vote for the variance with that condition.
That variance is already granted.
No, no, I know.
But we can't leave the previous one granted, the variance.
No, no, but he can make a condition to, to say that that previous variance is over and this is the new one.
So we're can now.
Which I guess ties into what Joe said.
Which was my question. I just find it unusual that we would have two reliefs on the same piece of property, which is, I hear where you're coming from.
Wait, 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 we're taking a, we're taking a recess for a couple of minutes, so I don't want to take any information until we're back on the record.
Don't run away. Mr. Chairman, board members, the property owner is, is accepting of that condition.
Okay. So, so you've got an answer to your question then. So, does somebody want to, but the board's in the middle of deliberation, so I don't.
The motion is.
The motion is, your motion.
Yes, to approve.
To approve, but with the express condition that the previous variance.
Previous variance is null and void.
Is, it will be null and void, withdrawing.
Withdrawing.
I don't know, I don't, let me think what it is. The previous, the previous variance would be.
Rescinded.
Rescinded.
I don't agree with it.
I know, I know.
And I wouldn't accept it, but that's, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Pardon me?
A, can we do that?
Maybe, but it doesn't matter. This condition will supersede that.
You can make any condition you want.
Good.
If we don't agree with it, we can appeal it.
Yeah, no, wait, who, stop, stop. We're in the middle of voting. Go ahead, Joe. We have discussion on the motion.
So, my discussion on the motion goes to the, to the applicant, realizing that if a new, if a, a new decision is rendered, that it can be appealed. You, you understand that?
Of course.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Either way.
Well, and if we lose the appeal, then the new decision goes away and the old permit is still valid. It's all or nothing.
Yeah.
Of course. Procedurally, that's what's going to happen.
Yep.
We may appeal it.
Understood. Okay.
Actually, the variance, if you don't file it, would be rejected anyway.
No, no.
That's my motion.
So that's your motion. Approve with the previous variance being rescinded. So, second, did somebody second it?
I did, and I rescinded.
Okay. You did, but you rescinded, okay. Do I have a second on John's motion? Dan, no. Jim, no. Okay. So, one, two, three, John's motion doesn't go forward. Do I get another motion to either grant or deny? And that's, this is the variance part of it.
Joe, what were you, what are you looking for?
No, I'm just saying, I, I think we're on, we're on an odd slope if we're going to begin rescinding our, our previous, our previous decisions. So, were I to make a motion on this, it would simply to be to approve.
Okay.
With, with no codicil.
Okay. So, are you making a motion to grant?
I will make the motion.
The variance, motion to grant.
No, second.
Second by Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion now? Okay. I have a second. John Frank?
No.
No. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Yes. Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Yes. Joe Pereira, yes. Chairman Assad, yes. So, four to one vote that the variance is granted, there's no condition associated with it, and this project, from the zoning board's standpoint, can go ahead after the appeal period runs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody need a break? I know John was heading out.
Do you want?
Are you sure? Go ahead.
No, no, do you want, do you want a break? Good, okay. All right. Agenda item number five, Joseph and Dolores Ventura, three eighty-six Lawton Street, E thirteen sixteen, a variance request.
Yeah.
Okay, can we take it outside, please? Thank you. Variance request to subdivide the existing parcel into two. Parcel one would retain the existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling, and parcel two would retain the existing market store.
Ready? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, again for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech CEC, here this evening on behalf of Joseph Ventura, who is the owner of the real estate at three eighty-six Lawton Street in Fall River, Massachusetts. I would think that you would all be somewhat familiar with this, with this property, as I was, growing up not too far from here. This real estate is located off the westerly side of Stafford Road as you're approaching the Harbor Mall on Lawton Street, just a few houses in. Currently on the property, there is an existing three-family structure to the front of the property that you see on the plan, both up there and the plan that you have as well. And then to the rear of it, there is an existing market slash store, that is Ventura's Meat Market. There is a lengthy history with regards to the property and how we got to the point that we're at today, and I tried to put as much of it into the petition that we, that we had, that we submitted. This is an R four two-family district. This parcel is considered non-conforming for a number of reasons, pre-existing non-conforming, the size of the structure, the frontage, I mean, sorry, the size of the lot, the frontage for the lot, the three-family use on the property, and then we have the, the market to the rear of the property. This structure dates back to about nineteen hundred from the building department records and had a concrete structure to the rear of it that was utilized for a meat-cutting operation. In nineteen seventy-seven, there was a variance issued by the zoning board of appeals in book eleven eighty-three, page two fifty-two, that I have a copy of, but I'm sure the chairman found a copy in his independent research, that I will, I'll just read you a.
Go ahead, read.
Quick portion of it. Mr. Monas moved that the petition of Joseph, Joseph and Dolores Ventura, three eighty-six Lawton Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, for permission to use the existing concrete block building at the rear of three eighty-six Lawton Street, now used for a meat-cutting business as a meat retail store, and to waive the minimum side, yada, 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 as we move on. So, back in seventy-seven, there was a variance that allowed the conversion to, from just a meat-cutting operation in this structure.
To a store.
Into an actual market and store. So the established uses on the property are, nobody opened up a, a meat market without having proper permit. We get a little bit of a twist when this building burns in two thousand and three, the existing concrete building. And that building was allowed to be reconstructed in two thousand and four, as you see it as it is today. So we have these two existing structures on this non-conforming parcel of land. I wish the back building was a residential structure, and then I would be here as a special permit, but that is not the case. So under forty-six twenty-three B, we are not afforded a special permit, but we could if it was a different structure.
Excuse me for a minute. Mark, can you do me a favor? Can you tell them to move out of there, please? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So, when, when Mr. Ventura approached me, he's had a, again, a very lengthy history on this property. His son, who was his partner in this business, passed away in two thousand and fifteen, very young of age, was born in nineteen eighty-two, died in two thousand and fifteen. That's who this, was taking over this business. Just in June of two thousand and twenty-one, Dolores passed away, which was Mr. Ventura's wife. And at that time, he had a concern of, it's only me left, I have one daughter that still runs the store with me, they live in three eighty-six, there were other family members that lived there as well. So he came to me with, okay, I want to be able to, because I'm at my end of my life, I want to be able to leave this store to the daughter that's worked with me forever, and I want to be able to have the three family as a separate entity for the remainder of the family to, to take ownership of. So this is, he's trying to set up his passing when that day may come. Has no bearing on this board whatsoever. Just trying to give you the history of how we've gotten there.
Thank you.
So what's very important to understand, and it's a little bit different, if this was the existing concrete structure, I think the chairman will agree we could one hundred percent file a sit-go subdivision plan and just subdivide this parcel as is, having two structures on this parcel prior to subdivision control law. Where it gets a little bit iffy is that this structure was reconstructed in two thousand and four due to fire.
But it was done properly.
But done properly.
It was done properly.
That's correct.
I, I think that's pivotal.
So I, so I am going to assert that we would still have the ability just to file a sit-go. As you know, when we deal with forty-six twenty-three B, we can file sit-gos on all of those, but that doesn't mean it's the best way to do it. Then we end up with issues of fencing, access, utilities, so coming to this board and seeking relief is really the best way to get to the end result of what we want to do. So we have a hardship of this.
And your petition is with a variance.
This is a variance, absolutely. So we have this lot that does not conform, structures that don't conform, use that doesn't conform for both of them. So what we're proposing to do is to subdivide this, and again, there are a couple of different avenues that we, we could go. This is the right way to do it. We could file a sit-go plan and just have it be the Wild West, we could condominiumize the two, the two buildings, and that would be the Wild East, but coming to you and doing this the correct way with a clear hardship of having these two structures on this property is more non-conforming, having two structures.
This is the cleanest way to make the break.
This is the cleanest way. So I, I offer to you that we have substantial hardship where we have multiple non-conforming uses. Two structures on one property makes it even more non-conforming, two different uses makes it non-conforming, and we feel that the granting of the variance, no change in use of this property is going to take place.
No.
The market is still the market.
Property lines are changing and ownership may.
The three-family house is a three-family house. Whatever parking is available on-site now will be available later. So this is strictly to have two separate ownerships, and there are multiple ways of doing it, but we feel that coming to you, one, we feel that it's appropriate to ask you for this relief, and two, moving forward, this would be the cleanest and best way for them to move forward.
Okay.
If you have any specific questions regarding how we've proposed the subdivision or the uses and how they've taken place, I'd be more than glad to answer those questions.
Current twenty-two point seven one feet that you show on Lawton Street.
Yes.
The access to this market, that's what, that's, as I was.
That's proposed.
As I was out there walking on it, I mean, that's kind of how wide it is right now.
So what, where we determined where that was, was you'll see the, the side of, the set of steps, just to the back right hand corner.
Well, I think it's three eighty-six, that's right.
So I made sure that we had, you know, that four foot is that magic number, you know, to get everyone around it.
No, that's what I want to make sure, that as, as I'm looking at the plan and when I was out there, the, the width of the access to the back seems to be about twenty feet, so that's sufficient to go in and out. And I saw the stairs and I said, so you're going to have an offset, so there, there won't be any issue.
And similar to what we do with conditions on four twenty-six three-B, there, a condition should be in place that no fences be erected.
The, the other, the other.
We don't want to box in this house, that's for sure.
So, we haven't gotten to conditions yet, but I would, I would also ask the board to consider, on this particular project, that some type of permanent boundary markers be a condition, because I'm finding that when we do these, I'm getting phone calls and I'm hearing from the building inspector, that there are sometimes arguments because they don't know where the build, where the property lines are. So rather than have some temporary, maybe we should put something more permanent, to find the points of the lots. But, anyway, members of the board, ask some questions. Separate utilities, it may be already be.
I believe it is separate already, but, by all means.
But, we'll do it, I think the board should consider an affidavit to that effect and expand the affidavit that the boundary markers have to be in before a sale. But anyway, let's see. Anything else, guys?
And fencing.
Fencing, no fencing.
No fencing.
And that's one of the reasons for making sure the boundary mark is a bad.
And what, what, what people see on that property now is what they'll see after this line is drawn. Nothing changes.
Yeah. Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Oppo, opposition? Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Richard Burke, I'm an attorney in Bedford with Oregon, Burke and Franco. I represent Diane Texera, who lives at three seventy Lawton Street, right next door, and she is opposed to the petition. May, may I approach Mr. Chairman?
Of course you can, of course.
Some things to file. First, this is a photograph that my client gave, and I, I suppose maybe the members are familiar. The concern that we have mainly is the narrow width of the access to the business. It says a little bit over twenty feet, as was said, and it's creating significant parking problems in the neighborhood. I also would like to submit a petition. It's signed by fourteen members, fourteen people who live on Lawton Street, so right, right in the neighborhood. So, photograph, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And this is the petition.
Yep.
All, all of the people who signed are on Lawton Street. Also, I, we had some other documents I'd like to submit.
Thank you.
We actually have the minutes of the original variance as, along with, there was a second variance that was sought and granted that was appealed by my client to Superior Court, and I have the decision in that case. So there are two documents here, let me just pass them on. I have a copy. So the, of the documents I passed out, the minutes of the variance that, that was granted in.
So is this, is this the first one that says planning June eleventh, two thousand and two on it? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, and, and it's actually the minutes of the nineteen seventy-seven variance that was originally granted for this to be a store.
So where do you want us to, tell us where you want, or read to us, tell us.
What I, what I wanted to focus your attention on, on the first page in the, I guess it's the fourth paragraph. At that time, it was stated that this is a family operation, and he, the applicant, doesn't intend to hire anyone else, doesn't intend to quit Fernandez, he would stay within fifteen to twenty hours a week, depending on business. So that's how this business originated. It was a family-owned, with a family living right next door on the same property, part-time, supposedly business. But what has happened since then is that it's obviously not part-time. It's caused significant problems with parking in the neighborhood, which is why you have fourteen immediate abutters, some of whom are here tonight and will speak, opposed to it. In nineteen, or two thousand and three, the applicant sought another, another variance. At that time, it was a variance to put a freezer building, kind of a smaller shed-type building in front of the store, for which he needed a variance, and the zoning board of appeals granted a variance. My client appealed that variance to court, and that's the second paper that I gave you. And I think, I'd just like to read briefly on page four of Judge Robert Kane's decision. He was the Superior Court judge who decided that variance case, because he, he took a view of the property at this time in two thousand and three, and he noted as follows on page four, "The amount of traffic, both in the form of customers, cars, and delivery trucks, coming and going to Ventura's Meat Market infringes upon Texera's," that's my client, "use of her residential property. The amount of vehicular traffic coming to the meat market imposes an overload of vehicles on a street that is narrow and has a substantial number of homes on small lots in close proximity to each other. Because of the traffic generated by Ventura's business, those cars use the adjacent roadway to park, and that parking at times intrudes upon the driveways of Texera and other neighbors. In addition, the amount of foot traffic into and out of Ventura's business creates a significant level of noise which intrudes on Texera's privacy, causing her on weekends to seek relief by leaving the home." And I would submit to you that that traffic problem has not abated in the years since. Judge Kane did go on to talk about a variance, and he noted on page seven, that there's no evidence in the record to support the criteria that this request for variance derives from circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography of the land owned by Ventura, which as the board knows is the standard for a variance. We feel that the current proposal to split this property with a variance into two properties, I understand that the applicant says that for the time being it would stay within the family, but once a variance is granted, to sell the properties separately, they could forever after be sold separately as independent parcels. And we also think that by splitting the properties, right now, at least there's a little bit of parking alleviation when box truck, tractor-trailers come, they can't, they park on the street, they can't get in. Box trucks maybe can get in. The concern is that, although they allot, allot, they park on the street, but that if you, if you allow them to be separate parcels instead of a shared driveway, it's going to make that worse. I mean, they're showing parking on the plan with, with four parking spaces on this little bit over twenty-foot width for this lot, and as the board knows, although, you know, this isn't a, a, a use that's not allowed, it's allowed by variance, but if this were a residence, it would need a hundred feet of frontage in this zoning district. They're showing a little over twenty. And then when you look at the three-family, that also is non-conforming, because as was stated, it's a two-family district, this plan really shows no parking on what would be the three-family lot, where that, that would require six parking spaces, two under the zoning bylaw for each apartment, and there's no parking there. So the concern of the neighborhood is that this is just going to make matters worse than they already are. And I think the other concern is that, as was described in nineteen seventy-seven, when the variance was first granted, it was supposed to be, I live here, I'm going to have a little meat market behind my house, fifteen to twenty hours a week, manageable. It's not that, and it hasn't, you know, it's become something completely different. But at least if the family lives there and they own the business right next door, they're at least in the neighborhood, they're, they're sharing the use of the driveway, they're keeping an eye on things. If you grant the variance, this business could be sold to a completely different owner that doesn't live there, that will have only one purpose in mind, which is to maximize that business, and with the parking problems as they exist, it will only make things worse for the neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Do you want me to go first, or do you want to go first?
No, no, I was-
I, I'd like to thank Attorney Burke for the information. I take, I have some concern with some of the points that he brought forth. With regards to reading through the minutes, where it is implied, or this is what we intend, there's no specific condition in any granting of any relief that stated that this property needed to be owned, operated, and maintained by the same family for eternity. Clearly not. I mean, what's, what's determined in this decision and-
That, that, that condition, I submit, wouldn't, wouldn't have, wouldn't be valid under 48, personally.
Correct. But, but I'm, I'm just trying to go from, from point to point. So, as far as what he brought forth from some of these other cases, there is no condition. A lot of times, we'll put a condition, or you'll put a condition, no further subdivision, or, I mean, any number of reasons, no fences. There were no specific conditions on this property, precluding this type of sub, proposed subdivision from coming before you. With regards to access, parking, things of that nature, nothing is going to change on this site. Currently on that property, the driveway and parking area is used primarily for the restaurant, I mean, sorry, for the market. If there's a concern regarding the narrowing of that, we can easily plant, provide an additional four-foot easement right up to the stairs, if they really think vehicular access is going to be that difficult. I think it's going to be fine. This is not Shaw's supermarket or Stop &amp; Shop. I've been there on multiple occasions, and certainly there are days that are going to be busier than others. I've never had a problem parking in the driveway itself. And again, I don't live in the neighborhood, so I don't want to make you think that I understand the parking concerns for this neighborhood. But, when the store closes, no one's looking for on-street parking to go to this market. It's during the day. I've never seen an issue. If it's trucks and vehicles that are, that are delivering stuff and parking on the street, that should not be allowed. The building inspector should send a letter to the owner of the market and say, "Loading and unloading of vehicles in this residentially-zoned area is not allowed. Please do it on your own property." That's the proper way to resolve one of these matters like this. Or, it can be a condition moving forward here, that you, we've done this on the little restaurant on Stafford Road and Miller Street, that there would be no loading or unloading on the streets. Can be handled simply, and make an improvement over what's currently out there. That's all. I mean, I just wanted to give a couple of quick responses to some of the items raised by the abudder's attorney.
But, that's, that's the problem of having, having a variance, having a commercial use in a residential area.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, Attorney Burke, do you have anything else you'd like to?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I know, I know that you will-
There's others here that might-
I, I understand that, but I, I understand that most of these people are with you, but if there's somebody that would like to speak independently, they'll-
Well, I'm, I'm, my name's Chat Texera, I live on 370 Lawton Street, and I'm an apartment too. My concern is, I have small children. If this is separated the way it is, and I know, as it's saying, it's going to stay the same, but as soon as you separate it, it can be sold at any point. Now, that three-family house, you're taking away the driveway to it, parking cars now on the street, say it's filled up to capacity, two to, to, oh, two to each one, we'll just go with that for now, and then, my child, my son's crossing the street. He now has to look across many more cars that are going to be there, as opposed to now when you can use the driveway. And as much as we say, again, it's going to be operated the way it is, if it's sold, and somebody both buys each property, that store is now owned by somebody else, and they can say, "You can't park in the driveway, you got to park on the street." If there, once, once that house is sold, and now you have to renovate that, the dumpster now has to go on the street, as opposed in the driveway, because it's no longer owned by the tenement house. It's just safety concerns, the school, which, fraternal school, which is on the next street, they use our street to walk over and pick up their kids from, from the school-
I'm going to let you speak, yes, ma'am.
To pick up the kids from the school, and again, parking in front of the fire hydrant across the street, because there's no more parking on the street. You add those six vehicles that could potentially fill that house, and take away the driveway, which they could have access to, the way it is now, because it's not subdivision, I have shared. Now, they're in the road, it's, parking's even worse. He has, it's hunting season. He has deer being dropped off at night, which, again, I don't want to infringe on his business, I have no problem with what's going on, but cars turning in our driveway now, because parking could be an issue. I had to wait the other night. My, my biggest concern is the parking, if it's sold later on, which we have no control over, the traffic part of it, and again, safety. I mean, we have kids in the neighborhood crossing over, his best friend lives across the street, my son's, and more obstacles. Honestly, we had to have twenty-five mile-through-our signs put in, because it's the only street that goes straight through to the, to the avenue, aside from the one where the school is. So, now, it's like a highway, basically. They, they come down it, and they fly down all the time, and more obstacles, they see little kids, it's just detrimental to us. It's not sa, it's a major safety issue for me. So, that's my opposition for it, and that's the reason why. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for coming up. Madam? I was working, I was working my way across-
Well, then she's, she would, she would turn it back.
Okay. My name is Amy Carr. I live at 379-
Carr.
Carr. C-A-R. 379 Lawton Street.
Yes.
And it's pretty much diagonal across the street.
Yep.
So, safety, definitely number one concern. Definitely so many more people walking.
Can I ask you one? It has to be right now. Whether or not this is separated or not, what you're talking about exists de facto on the ground right now?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, definitely, safety. Because there are cars backing out, and if there are two cars parked in front, they're, they're trying to get out of their driveway to back out, customers, I've seen almost accidents, I have seen accidents-
That was probably in your driveway.
Yeah. Luckily, no, not in my driveway, but still, but people, it's just a nightmare. I came home from work last week, like, twenty minutes earlier than what I normally do. I had to sit in order, in front of my house, in front of the fire hydrant, because there was no parking whatsoever, because school was getting out. And not a parking spot at all. And usually, that's around the time, there's still people going from work, going into the meat market. It's a complete nightmare. Definitely the change in time of the school day is different now, so that it seems like there's an increase in COVID, less busing, all that stuff, I think, is contributing to the traffic as well. School crowd traffic, younger kids, trucks delivering, sometimes I have, like, "What's that noise?" Eighteen-wheeler sit in front of my house, in front of their driveway. There were times that they have actually been sitting in their car, waiting for the eighteen-wheeler to-
Yes.
To unload their truck, and if they have appointments and whatnot, I've, I've seen it. Let's see. Definitely the parking. There are currently no tenants actually, living in their three-tenement apartment. We also have another empty apartment that's a couple houses down, that has no tenants in it currently, so they're in the process of gutting that out, too. So, that's more added on. Let's see. None of us were probably notified either. We didn't get a letter about this, they told us about it. And-
He lives right on the side.
And he lives on, he's the other abutter, and he did not get a letter either about this.
I can't answer that. The abudders list is prepared by the assessors' office, and it was to be abudders, who people that are next door, and abudders to abudders, and people directly across the street, so I would assume-
Yeah, we didn't get anything, and no one across the street got it, got it either.
What, what address is that?
379.
She's dyak, she's not directly across-
Like, dyak, not directly across the street, but-
Yeah, so it's only directly across the street, right. Yeah, so 389-
And maybe 402.
You know, I'm also worried about, you know, future property value, and, you know, property value going down. We've been living in Florida River for forever, there are, you know, I've been actually lived right next door to, our whole life, I've been living on, all of us actually have been.
No, I got it.
Same, same place, you know.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of amazed. You have a very competent attorney representing you. I'm kind of surprised that somebody, no, no, I'm not being fresh about it, I'm being serious, that based on what you're telling me, I'm surprised no one's run to court and gotten an injunction or tried to raise the nuisance issue on it.
Well, I think we've just become accustomed to it, but now, now that you see that there could be possible changes, I think that's more of an issue-
Ever talked to the owners of the Ventura?
Oh, yeah, we have. We, yeah, we talked to them, here and there, you know.
Obviously, obviously, there's been no resolution to it.
No, but-
This woman's smiling. I'm going to let you speak in a minute, yeah.
Yeah, but it's just, I, I think it's just important, you know, obviously, we're worried about the future. We want to stay in Florida River.
It's your neighborhood, you live there. I got it.
Exactly, exactly.
Our whole life.
Our whole life.
Can I add one, two? Sorry. I'm sorry. One of the nice parts about trying to conserve the residential aspect of it is, every house on that street, including tenement houses, has the option to park off-street parking. If this house is separated like this, and then sold later on, that goes away. So, now, it's no longer that residential feel, because all that overflow of parking now goes onto the street. So, it's just going to exacerbate everything worse.
I understand, but Ventura's is going to continue, I think, until something else happens, or somebody else takes over. Madam, would you like to speak?
Oh, no.
No?
I'm just, I'm just-
He was doing a good job. I, I know you are.
I don't want it. And what address you're at?
355 Lawton.
Okay, thank you. Was there some, may I have your name, please? I'm going to, I see him. I will recognize you in one second, sir. May I have your name, madam, for the record, so?
Jane Ferreira.
Thank you, Jane. Sir? Yes?
I'm living on 400 Lawton Street, because it's close between the bank.
403?
400.
Four hundred, just right to the right.
You're right next door, you're directly, yes.
Yeah. Sometimes, you know, I want to go out to my driveway, the truck, he bring the meat, he, he will come back my driveway. I got to come out, talk to the man, "Hey, I want to go out."
I want to go.
See, "Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, no pay for anything," you know. "I want to go out, move the truck right now." Okay, I'm sorry, he moved the truck. Says, "Mr. Ventura, you know, you know, we have nothing, you know." You know, so, that's why I don't like, I don't like him, because he's making me bedtime over there. I'm living over there twenty-eight years, almost forty years already, you know. So, it's a good place to live. Nice, nice and quiet, you know, just there, just there, you know. Says, "I'm so sorry," you know. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for coming. You live in the neighborhood, we need to hear this.
Yes.
We need to hear this. I'm just concerned that it's going to continue so long as it's there.
Thank you.
Okay.
And there are others, can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am, may I have your name, please?
Diane Texera.
Yes.
And there are other people who oppose, who are elderly, and couldn't come to the meeting, or they would have come.
Okay. You got it. The neighborhood does not like this proposal.
No.
May I have your address, please?
370 Lawton. I'm the other abutter. Mr. Colaco and I bear the brunt.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard, in favor or opposed? Okay?
If I could just respond just quickly. As far as the argument for hardship, we presented that. What I can offer is, again, if the need, the board felt that it was a need to create an easement on 386 to provide additional access area in that driveway, we could do that. I really don't think we need to, but that's possible. More importantly, I think there is an opportunity for this board to place new conditions on this commercial use that weren't put in place when these variances were first granted, that can address a number of the concerns that the neighbors may have. Hours of delivery, location of delivery vehicles, just those two items alone, I would think would create an improvement to how the operation for this meat market is run on a daily basis, that would create less of an impact on the abutting properties. So, this board, if they did decide to move the petition forward, they could find or make a condition that every delivery needs to be done within the existing driveway. They can require that deliveries are only during a certain time of the day, so maybe that a deer isn't getting delivered in the middle of the night, you know, things of that nature. The board can put any condition they see fit to help improve the surrounding neighborhood. You have the opportunity to do that through this mechanism. If we were to go the route of a sickgo or of a condominium, this board would not have the ability to present or propose those types of conditions to help the neighborhood. So, that's why I thought even coming with you, we could put conditions in place to improve the existing use of the property. And again, the daily existing use would not change, but apparently, there is a concern about that existing use. So, now, we do have the opportunity to change that.
But, this isn't a use variance, that, that's-
No, that's correct. No, this is just strictly a subdivision, yeah, right.
I can't see how we could have the opportunity to-
You can, this is the zoning board of appeals, you can do whatever you want.
You sound like the chairman, it's the zoning board, we've got the power, but, I got it.
So, Dan, could a consideration of a easement that grants the apartment's house use of the parking on off-hours?
The, the board can make any condition they want. I don't have to accept it.
Yeah.
If that's how you want to move the project forward, we'll either have to live with it or not. But, if that's something that the board is concerned about, then, if it's in, if it's a condition of approval, then we have to live with it.
So, remember, this is a variance, shape, topography, soil, condition, hardship, public. So, that's what's before the board. The neighborhood has raised some issues about the actual, you know, de facto, day-to-day operation over there. Changing the property lines is really what's before, is, is this efficient, do they present shape, topography, soil, condition, hardship to do it, or do we say, you know, keep it together, and then maybe that's how these types of things in neighborhoods change as owners die off, this particular use will disappear, and go to a more appropriate place, I don't know. But, so, motion to grant, motion to deny, have they met their burden of proof? If they have, then we should get a motion to grant. If they haven't, then it should be a motion to deny. I didn't look to my right. Dan, Joe, any comments, anything?
Just an observation, that it would appear that we, if we leave it as is, we haven't rectified a single problem that the neighbors have expressed.
No, 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 no. We've done nothing.
Yeah, if we put conditions on, on granting it, we haven't made it any worse, but we can maybe eliminate some of the problems.
That's, that certainly is an option, or-
But, can I say one thing?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Go. What else were you saying? No, no.
End of thought.
No, madam, if you want, before we start deliberating, I'll let you speak.
But, that's not true.
What's not?
Right now, there's a shared property. So, the tenants park in the lot, the customers park in the lot when they can. So, that, so it is a detriment if you split it.
She said there's no tenants there.
No, no.
Because right now, it's shared.
I will tell you, madam, I, for the chairman, I understand what you're saying. There are problems on that particular project. So, what you're listening to, the part of a deliberation that hasn't happened yet, is Mr. Corkins opining, but we have an opportunity to do something, maybe. But, we haven't gotten there, so. That is the public input, motion to grant, motion to deny. Did they make it, didn't they do it?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before you do make a motion, and listening to what Mr. Corkins has stated, if, if the board, we can offer that we can provide three designated off-street parking spaces for the three-family use, and whatever we have left for the commercial use is available, which would probably leave us with three spaces. So, we could do three for the three-family, and three for the business. So, if that was a condition, that's something that, that we could make work.
Would, would that be in off-hours, when the business is closed, or in general?
All the time, in general. So, the three-family could sit in their three parking spaces all day long.
Yeah, and then picture that they show they have cars on both sides, coming down, but, but you need easement, you need, yeah.
Right, so it'll, it'll be done through easements and rights, and, you know, how we do when we deal with the sub, other subdivisions of multifamily structure.
Thank you. Attorney Burke, I need to-
I just don't see how that's possible, Mr. Chairman. You can see the plan, they've proposed this, only four spaces that they've got lined up on one side of the twenty-foot-wide driveway access, and there's no way, if, if they designate three of those to residents-
They took to the house of the residents.
You got one for the business, which is why I think the neighbors are telling you, they don't like it, but they're afraid it'll be worse if you split it.
I hear that loud and clear. Thank you. Okay, that ends it, discussion. Members of the board, motion to grant, motion to deny.
Just as a comment, I don't see how we change anything if we go either way.
Okay. So, so, let, let me try narrowing it down for you. Yeah, we may not, but did they meet the burden? If they met the burden for a variance, do they have shape, do they have topography, do they have soil conditions, do they have a hardship? Is it in the public interest to grant the variance, then we should grant under 48, Section 10. If they haven't met it, then it should be a motion to deny. It's kind of where I'm coming from, because this is a variance. The standard is high.
Correct, which we seldom have in front of us. Do I feel, in the purest sense, that they've met the burden for a variance? I do not. And based upon that, I would make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny. Do I have a second on the motion to deny?
I'll second.
Second, by Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? My only comment about the denial in this particular project is, one of my views about these types of pre-existing nonconforming, is at some point, they die a natural death, and it goes back to the neighborhood the way it should be, the perpetuation of a pre-existing nonconforming. But, then again, there's a variance which makes this particular activity conform- But then again, there's a variance which makes this particular activity conforming, it's difficult for the neighborhood, the neighbor has had it all, so, I got it, I mean, that's just.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, no, you got it, I mean, I understand, so.
Motion, second.
Motion, second, okay, John Frank?
Yes.
Yes, Jim Corkins?
Yes.
This is to deny, yes, yes. Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Yes, Joe Pereira, yes, Chairman Assad, yes.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming out, neighborhood, we need you. Mr. Burke, thank you for your input. Agenda item number six. Catahoula Development LLC, care of Mark Levin Esquire, Danforth Street, Lot O1443. Variance request to merge four parcels of land and construct four two-unit, four, two-two unit townhouses. The combined parcel would provide for an area of 21,631 square feet with 247 feet of frontage, waiving requirements in the G District. Oh, that was Dan Agia. I said, I did, it was you who dropped this off in front of me.
Yeah, Dan's part of our group on this one, Dan's the engineer there.
Will you identify yourself, Attorney Levin, for the record, please, thanks.
Attorney Levin, 138 Rock Street, Forver, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight representing Catahoula Development LLC. I'm here with one of the principals today, Frank Marcioni, and I'm here with Dan Agia, who's the engineer that principally designed this based on an issue with topography and shape. So let's start off.
Is this the old Finney stuff?
No, 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 this, this property was a piece of land that had been owned by the Forver Animal Rescue League.
Okay.
For many years. They, they've owned it for many years. One of the reasons why they owned it and never did anything with it or sold it before is because if you look at the back of this property, which is the back of their property, parallel to Durfee Street, there is an extremely large, tall retaining wall with a cliff. The reason why they never sold it is because that retaining wall keeps them from sliding into the property next door. If it collapses, this property and the abutting property goes down. Within last year, they decided they had no choice but to sell the property because that wall is stunning to breach. Part of the deal that my client struck with the Animal Rescue League is that if my client purchased this property and used it to develop, he would rebuild that retaining wall to assure that their property would not cave in. They own the wall, but we've agreed, we're gonna repair it, re-assure it so that it does not collapse and, in fact, the Animal Rescue League, then it is not on Danforth Street instead of on Durfee Street. So, that came about in the past year. Prior to that, as noted in the petition, a prior owner, prior prospective owner, had considered buying this and received a Form A, applied for a Form A plan to create four separate lots. The lots, I think, were of such nature that they were gonna create a three-family on one and singles on the other. My client looked at that and decided after meeting with Mr. Agia, that there were issues with that property that were apparent, that that wouldn't be a satisfactory use, and to keep this large lot together would be better because they could properly put drainage, maintain it, keep the retaining wall in the back, and maintain that retaining wall and make it a covenant for it. If you look at the property, you'll see it's one of the largest properties in the area, even bigger than the Animal Rescue League property. It's an odd-shaped lot itself. It, it just, it actually, the title goes back to the 40s of the same shape. What is interesting as you see the, is you've been out to the property and you look into it toward Durfee Street, you see this large wall, and if you look at that property, it declines over a 25-foot period to Danforth Street. Problem with putting single families, or just one-three family, is that the expense to properly maintain the drainage on the lot and to build the structure on a slope or dig it out so that it can be built properly up is not affordable for anyone to build a single-family home, which is, no one would do it because it would cost them, between maintaining the, the back wall, which is, we, I think Dan is saying was about $100,000 just for the wall itself, the drainage is probably gonna be for that lot, another $100,000 to do what they have to do with site plan review. We looked at this, we said, it's in a general zone, we're allowed to build three-family dwellings across here, we can have seven dwellings plus, we'd have a little extra, we'd be 700 feet short for the eighth. So we're not much different in planning this eighth. The eighth unit and the units that they're designed is to be uniform, as Mr. Agia has provided to you, that's a rendering of what they're gonna do. The reason why it's designed that way as a townhouse is because of the severe slope that comes from the back to the front, the driveways will be right on front of the property, will come right into, from Danforth Street, and you drive right into the garage. Because the way the, the house is and the way they would build it, that's where you would have the second level being the dining room, living room, kitchen, and then the bedrooms on the top, because it's the only way you could really design it. Instead of having these on separate parcels, we put them all at one because it's gonna have sheer drainage systems. And if you sell off these things to individual people with separate lots, you're gonna have someone's not gonna pay one day, well, there's a backup on this property, there's a need to do some other drainage work, there's a need to add stone, it'll, it won't work. We've, we've seen it before, we create easements, and then people are going to court to enforce them. It costs too much money to go to court, by the time they enforce it, it's almost as much as someone paying for it. So to make this one property, and the only sideline setback there is for any of this is the, the building number eight, where from the street, there's seven feet, and the back, the back rear yard, where you see that, is eight feet, the smallest area, that's the only, I mean, if you were gonna build these things as, on separate lots, that's the only house that has any need for a sideline or setback. Obviously, we're keeping the whole property as one big property, so it, we're asking for a waiver for the requirement that you divide the lots into 8,000 square foot lots to have these properties, actually 7,500, with, 6,500 with two-unit buildings. So, based on the fact that this is in a very unique property, I mean, it looks over the rail line, it, DeWalt Street's across the street, you have nothing on that side across from DeWalt. If you look at the surrounding properties, they're either multifamily, there's one single-family in the neighborhood, the rest of them are all multifamily or commercial uses or the Animal Rescue League. So, this fits in nicely, it's a nice design, we can absorb the cost for maintaining the, the wall, which will, which we agreed perpetually do, and if you're gonna tell each unit owner, if you're gonna have a separate lot, and tell them, oh, by the way, the Forver Rescue League requires you to maintain that, and it may cost you 20, $30,000 every 10 years to redo it, that's gonna have a real prohibitive need for someone to ever want to use this property. So by absorbing the property and using all of the land for these units, and only really waiving 700 square feet for the eighth unit, because we could do seven if we just designed a plan that was done before, I think it's a good project because it, it takes care of the, the neighborhood, it keeps drainage off of Danforth Street if their houses there, it alleviates the cost and maintenance for every owner to take care of the drainage that'll be there and the retaining wall.
They're not gonna be owners, are they?
They will be townhouses, so they will be potentially sold off as condos, and that's what we're planning.
All right, so, so when you, I just wanted to be clear, so it's gonna be a condo project?
Right.
The, and you're going to main, so the homeowners association is going to be responsible for?
That's correct.
Okay. So when you were saying, oh, they were, and they're not gonna pay, of course they are, because you're gonna have the homeowners association.
That's correct, but if they were separate houses.
No, no, I got it, I got it.
That's the problem.
No, no, I got it.
You wouldn't be able to really get them to enforce it, because people would have to sue each other.
No, no, I, I missed that, I just missed your statement, because that, that model now works.
Right.
Versus, how are you gonna enforce it, so I.
Right, because every one of the drainages, you know, even beside the, the land that slopes 25 feet down.
No, no.
You're gonna have downspouts, all these downspouts have to be tied into.
Well, Mr. Agia.
Well, that's right, he'll tell you that design.
With, with the drainage calculations, when he gets the site plan review, if he gets that.
But that's what, that's what would be required to be done, and, you know, we looked at this and said, do we use the four-lot subdivision that was created, and you get seven units there, or?
Merge them all together, do a big lot.
You merge it together, you build it as one, you, that way you know there's gonna be money to take care of that retaining wall after my client rebuilds it, and you'll know that there is people that have to pay into a fund, a condo fee, to maintain the drainage that'll always be something that has to be maintained and cleaned from time to time, the, and the oil traps that'll have to be placed there based on site plan review requirements.
That's site plan review, that's not zoning.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to let you know why this works really well as compared to having separate houses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add a few quick things, so the A&R Plan, I just gave you a copy, that's the plan that Attorney Levin was speaking of, which was the A&R Plan that had been created a number of years ago, was it 97 maybe?
Yes.
And you can see the odd shape of those lots. What happens when they look at A&R Plans, they're looking at flat earth, and they're not taking into account.
This is not flat earth.
Topography, so again, we have a 25-foot elevation difference, this odd shape, this lot came to be through a taking for Danforth Street, this used to be a rectangle, but they cut off that corner when they put the rail line in and had to relocate Danforth, so they cut into our lot, making this a very odd-shaped lot, the topography clearly is a, is a, I don't wanna say insurmountable in front of Frank, because it's his money, but it's a very difficult site to build on, and trying to build single-family homes individually would be, make it even more difficult. Creating this as one construction project, it's really almost like one building with space in between each one, dealing all the degrading, drainage, utilities as a singular project clearly helps with dealing with this topography. And we've pushed these buildings as close to Danforth as we can to get away from the wall, and the very severe topography, as you see those contour lines, it really ramps up towards the rear of this property. So this will allow a similar density that we could do on individual lots in a more constructive and efficient manner. That's all.
My only question, well, not my only, but one of my observations is, if I keep eating and you and I go in that coop with, are we gonna fit between five feet between the two buildings?
Five feet has been the minimum of what we've gotten approved in the past, actually, Alden, 69-hour Alden, I believe those buildings were five feet.
Five feet, no, no, I'm, I'm just asking because as I'm getting older and expanding, five feet is getting smaller and smaller.
So what happens is, we like to do duplexes because we now, we're not creating, creating an interior unit that has a lack of windows. So although with only five feet, it does give us the ability to create light and space for these units.
And again, the, the.
Yeah, you've got the western and eastern exposure too coming.
Yeah, if you see the way these are gonna walk, they're much nicer than just putting one big apartment building on the property.
No, no, there's not, all of that is fine, and it's just the five feet, because I'm thinking that I can knock on the next guy's window and say, give me a couple.
Well, it becomes a safety feature too, as far as moving between the buildings if there is something.
That's why I'm asking, that's all, with the five feet. I used to be tall and thin, I'm not.
I don't think you were ever tall and thin.
Tall.
Not thin. Let's go back to First Communion.
Let's go back, let's go back to First Communion. Let's get back to Danforth Street, okay. So that's your presentation, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Guys, any questions?
Yeah, if I could ask, are you going to, because you are rebuilding that retaining wall, are you gonna cut down any of that slope?
We're gonna do what we can to maybe try, like we did on, like I talked about on French Street in June, rather than maybe having one singular wall, maybe we can terrace it in six to eight-foot sections. We do have a lot of room now because we've been able to push the building closer to deal with maybe a terrace thing and some landscaping, rather than just having that sheer face wall, so yes.
And as planning, but I'm serious.
Yes.
When you, I'm assuming you took the title.
Yeah, I did the title.
So when, my, my recollection about the walls along Danforth Street, doesn't some, doesn't the railroad or somebody have, or the city have a perpetual easement?
Across the street, yes.
It's across the street?
That would've been through that taking piece that I was just talking about when they.
Yeah, you can see the.
Because I often wondered about, they have it, but they, I, they have the obligation, I think, the obligation to maintain it.
Yeah, but not our wall here, our wall is the, belongs to the.
Frank wishes.
The Animal Rescue League and the Butter Neighbor over here, but part of our deal was, we take care of the wall because.
No, I was just.
They couldn't, that's why they sold it, they couldn't afford to spend 100 grand to just to put the wall in and not have any use down here.
Yeah, no, it needs to get repaired, okay. Go. John, Jim, Dan, Joe, anything else? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay? So.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Okay, this is a variance, and you think that they've never seen this.
Love it, Brad.
So this is a 48, Section 10 model, okay. So, Jim Corkins, motion to grant, do I have a second?
Second.
John Frank, second, any discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
No, okay, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, good luck.
Thank you all very much, good time.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Have a great holiday.
Hey, Mark, did you get your check?
Have a good Christmas.
She's got money?
She gave it to me.
Good, okay.
Good.
Okay, agenda item number seven, 171 Pleasant Street LLC, 177 Pleasant Street, Lot N218, special permit request to Section 86, 451 and Section 454 to allow the erection of a freestanding double-sided electronic message billboard.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, again, my name is Dan Agia from SciTech CEC, here this evening on behalf of 171 Pleasant Street LLC, whose manager is Anthony Caderro, is here this evening as well in the audience, if you had a question for him. This petition before you, I know this stuff doesn't come before you often, I became fairly familiar with this process a number of years ago when the city was actually proposing a number of billboard sites, if you remember that, I think 13 different petitions we had put together, and that all kind of just fell apart.
So, let me ask you, why are you here?
Because we technically need a special permit from this board.
Why? Is it because of the square footage?
Nope, it's under section, I put the code section.
No, I know the section, I mean, it's a, under E, it seems like it's, it seems like it's a permitted use, and that's, that's why I was trying to figure the, anyway, I'll sit back and go for the ride, you can tell me. Hey, four. Take a look at 86-64.
Yeah, I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Electronic sign and outside sign, la-la-la, in a commercial mill district, is permitted, then you get to the dimensions in the commercial mill district, neighborhood shopping district.
Let me get there, I just did eight hearings, my head's full.
Come on, let's go.
Give me a second to catch my breath, I thought Mark was gonna talk more, then I could take a look at something.
Oh, is that what it is? Star Opticians, how's the deal?
No, my, my eyes are fine.
I got an extra pair with me.
Just gotta find the exact section. I'm getting there.
I'm just thinking, how big, how big's the face of the sign?
This is a billboard, this is not a sign.
I got it, it's a billboard.
Right, so the face of the sign is 14 by 50, I believe.
So that's, so you just, so you just answered the.
Let's say 50.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't come back for two inches.
And we also have representatives from the billboard, uh, company as well.
Well, I was going to say, the next thing you're going to need is from the state for the billboard commission.
Correct. But prior to going there, and I'm, I'm going through the zoning to find the section.
They just answered the question, why you need to be here? Because it's great, it's a billboard and it's greater than 40 square feet.
Right, but there's a, there's a specific section that references outdoor advertising boards. So I'm just trying to find that section for you. But, but we can move forward. I believe we need a special permit for the, from this board for the construction of a billboard sign, especially being an electronic message board.
And that's going to be under 86, 454, special permit grant.
No, it's not that. Because the 454 is just in general that you can permit any sign.
No, it's where the board has the authority to grant a special permit.
No, I know. But to conj, any sign of, of something that's not allowed, but there's a specific section dealing just with billboards.
Billboards.
Yes. And that's what I'm trying to find for you again.
Please, then I'll be quiet.
Because it used to be section 491 in the old regs.
Well, it's the new grapefruit colored regulation.
I understand that. But that's because I know it was 491. That's why I'm trying to find what section it is in this one. While I'm looking for this, if you have any questions with regards to the sign and lighting and things of that nature.
Let me ask the question about the easement where, because I think there's perpetual easement.
Correct. So, so, so let's get into that.
And looking at the plan, it looks like it's being, the stanchion is in the easement.
No.
No.
Which plan? I want to show you have the proper plan. He does have the revised plan.
I got the revised plan. Yes, I do.
So the initial plan that we had presented.
Says wall easement and it's right on, see plan?
Right. So originally, originally we had submitted a plan proposing the sign to the rear of this building.
Yes.
This new sign will be built just outside of that 10-foot wall easement.
Okay.
Just outside.
That, that's what I was, with my magnifying glass, trying to figure it out.
Once we, again, once we finished the survey and tightened that up, I mean, we could have probably wedged it in, but then the angle that we needed for the sign would not have been appropriate. It would have put us over the side property line. So again, let's get regarding this, the section of zoning. But this is a property located at 177 Pleasant Street. That is if you're heading west on Route 195. Just before you hit the underpass where City Hall is, uh, Cudero Insurance Company to your right-hand side. This sign is proposed to be adjacent to that building just outside of its existing parking area. And as you, originally, um, we had proposed a, a Y-shaped sign in the original application. Um, and then after dealing with the sign companies, again, that's what they do, because of the approach heading east, when you come out of the over-underpass area, it would be too quick to see another sign. So to spend that kind of money on a sign that no one was going to see coming that way. So this will have a stagnant rear, so it's still a double-sided sign, only electric on the one side. The city-facing sign would just be a stagnant sign, not, not illuminated, just a regular billboard sign. So not a message electronic board sign. So that's been a change. And that's after we were able to deal with the, the sign companies themselves.
So the piece that's going to be facing City Hall will be stagnant.
That is correct.
The one that's heading east, so if you travel to the west.
Be similar to a big blue sign.
You will see it. Come on down and see me, Tony Cudero Insurance.
That's correct. No. I don't think Tony will advertise that, but, oh, this is going to drive me nuts now. And I apologize for not having it. But I can trust you that there is a, because it, it talks about dealing with, with the outdoor advertising board.
Well, I think this base word situation, you have to get it. And if he's got the permits and he's got the authority from them, it's beyond the scope of the zoning board. That's a state permit.
Well, it's a separate permit, correct. Yeah. But there, but there is a separate section. So we would ask that you grant a special permit allowing the construction of the sign as we have proposed. Again, this, the sign will half be over the existing structure.
So a special permit therefore has been granted by the outdoor advertising authority.
What section are you reading?
I just wanted to be sure we're dealing with.
What section are you reading?
Take a look at page 86 dot 66, under I, off-street sign and off-street sign controlled by the outdoor advertising board.
There you go.
Which is used for the display of print. I know, there I go.
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
No off-street signs shall be erected or maintained unless the Board of Appeals grants a special permit thereof.
And in my petition, I said section 451, just now what subsection. So I appreciate it.
Uppercase I.
Uppercase I. There you go. I'm not crazy.
And lowercase c, a special permit thereof has been granted by the outdoor. So it's your representation that the outdoor advertising board has granted that permit?
Oh, I can ask.
Ask me.
Tony would like the ability to keep the city side of the sign as also being LED.
Well, that, isn't that what your original petition was?
It's what the petition says, but it's not what I had just presented to the board.
I, I understand. So you're retracting that, saying you want to keep it both?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
But would that come under our purview?
No, no. So under, so this is what it says. Let me read the section to you. If he has, is the representation that you have in accordance with Massachusetts General law 9329, has received the permit from the outdoor advertising authority. Do, do they have that in place?
We have preliminary. We've had discussions with them with regards to spacing, because the closest sign is actually the one that's in the Prima Care parking lot. So we have to be insured. So that, that is a process.
I says, this is what it says, Joe, I, off-street sign, an off-street sign controlled by the outdoor advertising board, and this will be controlled by the outdoor advertising board, which is used for the display of printed or painted advertising matter. One, no off-street signs shall be erected or maintained unless, A, the Board of Appeals grants a special permit therefore, B, the height setback illumination requirement set forth herein are met, and C, a special permit therefore has been granted by the outdoor advertising authority in accordance with Massachusetts General law, chapter 93, section 29 through 33, as from time to time amended, and such permit is valid and outstanding. The board of, now this is number two, the Board of Appeals may after a public hearing grant a special permit for an off-site sign, provided the board finds that such sign will not be harmful to the public good and will not adversely affect the value or amenity of neighboring property, and also provided that the following requirements are met. No off-street signs shall be erected in any residence, district, local business district or industrial park, which it's not. All off-street signs permitted by this subsection shall be subject to the requirements of nine, section Massachusetts General law, chapter 93, sections 29 to 33 inclusive, and to the following specific requirements. No more than one off-site sign structure shall be permitted to be erected on a lot having 50 feet or less of street frontage, and no more than one additional structure shall be permitted for an additional 50 feet of lot frontage or major fraction thereof. So this particular lot has the frontage. We got that. No such structure shall contain over signs per fa, no such structure shall contain over signs per facing, nor shall any off-site sign be permitted to be erected within 50 feet of any adjoining residence district if it would directly face such district and be visible therefrom. Number three, no off-street structure shall be permitted to be erected closer than 10 feet to the line of any public way or closer to such line than the existing building setback line, whichever is lesser setback. So I think you've got that with 10 feet off you've got there.
Yep.
No freestanding off-street signs shall be erected to exceed an overall height of 35 feet.
That's where 454 comes in.
Yeah. So it's over 35 feet?
Yes. Because currently the building is 30. There's a few air condition.
So, 35 feet, you need relief.
From 86.
Yeah, okay.
454.
Which is designed to be seen, no wall sign shall extend more than three feet above the roof or parapet line, and no roof sign shall be erected to extend higher than 35 feet above the roof at a point of mounting. Five, all off-street electronic signs permitted by this section shall be subject to the use in dimensional regulations of 86, 451E, with the exception of subsection E 1C. Commercial messages are permitted for off-street signs. So the, I think the pivotal thing is unless you have a special permit therefore has been granted by the outdoor advertising authority as from time to time, and such permit is valid and outstanding, if you've got that in hand, then I guess we can go. If you don't have it, then I would suggest it gets tabled until the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I, I think the last time we did it was, it was a condition of your approval. That, but that's fine. We could table it until we get that.
I'm just, I just, I just read the entire.
I understand.
This is where we are. And I don't think, if you don't have it in hand, then I think we're jumping the gun by one meeting.
Sometimes they don't like to listen to us until we've been here, but that's, that's fine.
You've been here.
So, so the 30, how big, I didn't see the dimension on the sign. How many, how many feet higher is it than 35?
It, so 35.
How much relief do you need height-wise?
The building is 30.
Yeah.
The bottom of the sign will be approximately six feet and then 14. So 20, 30, 50. So let's say, let's call it, let's call it 60, top of the sign.
Okay. And that's, that we're going to deal with if we get there under 86, 454. The zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to construct a sign other than those permitted, provided the board finds that the sign would not be detrimental to abutting properties and is needed to adequately identify the business. But this isn't going to be identifying any business.
Well, it's going to advert, it's going to have several businesses.
I understand, but it says the bit, well, I don't know. We'll get to the semantics of the business, but.
And theoretically, under sec, with section C with regards to having the in-hand permit, um, that could be resolved with 86, 454 as well. So you could, you could permit it conditionally under 86, 454. But we, we have no opposition of going there first.
Yeah, no, I got to think my way whether or not, I don't know, maybe I might have to amend it to a variance. I don't think we've got the authority to grant to change that. With special permit, we can grant, but I don't know about the dimensional requirement. Because I think this is the advertising of the business, but it's not the.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't say the business on that parcel.
I understand.
Does not say the business on that parcel.
But that would limit the potential use of the, the board only to advertising locations of business, or businesses.
Identify the business.
It doesn't say.
You may, you may, you may want to think, you may, you, I don't know, my, my thought is you may want to include variants to take care of it and not be.
Oh.
I mean, I don't think.
You're not going to move without going to them first, so let's, let's go get that. But if the board had any, had any concerns, we'd like to address them now, or at least now.
Go ahead, Joe.
Just a question regarding of air rights. We've got the permanent easement that's across here. It would appear that we're above that. So we're in the air rights over that easement.
No, 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 no. We don't.
I'm going by your drawing.
Yeah, we don't extend over the easement.
It's over the building, not over the easement.
Here is the easement line here.
Yep.
This sign will be constructed. This is private property.
No, that was to give you the 50 feet.
Thank you. I was going by your offset for the dimensions.
Sure, yeah, no.
I apologize for that.
No, the 10 feet was for the easement width, not for the setback to the.
Okay.
So it will be constructed outside the.
Do we table it?
It's going to be a change sign.
Yes, almost identical to the big blue. But if you had any questions, you would like the gentleman, they've, they've traveled to answer any questions you have regarding the sign.
I'm just saying, it falls under 86, 64 too, all the rules and regulations there.
That's, I mean.
Electronic sign, outside sign displayed with all the changes.
Right, but, but that's, the billboard, electronic billboard portion of it is covered. That's a different sign. So the, the other, that section is if you had auto sales and you have the flags going and the, the dates and all of that kind of stuff. The, the off-site sign billboard is covered under that other section that David had read.
More a matter of getting the other permit.
Permit first.
In hand.
There was a letter, right?
There was a letter in opposition, so even though we're not going forward, I'll read it into the record now. Uh, because I don't want to read it again when we come back. Uh, November 18th, 2021, uh, addressed to David Assad, Chairman for of the Zoning Board of Appeals, regarding 171 Pleasant Street Lot N 218, special permit request to section 86, 451 and 454 to allow the erection of a freestanding double-sided electronic message billboard. Dear Chairman Assad, this is from the citizens for advancement of scenic Fall River, 488 Hood Street, Fall River, Mass. 02720. Signature on, on no signature, but electronic signature maybe, Alfred J. Lima. On behalf of the citizens for advancement of scenic Fall River, we would like to comment on the above petition. The city has already 32 billboards on Interstate 195 and another eight on Route 24 for a total of 40 billboards. Does the city really need more? Traveling through the city on Interstate 195, one is faced with a shower of billboards that advertise all sorts of things that are advertised elsewhere. In addition, many of these signs are electronic in origin. If the city wants to show that it cares about its appearance, putting more signs on the highway is not the way we, not the way to do it. The request comes from citizens who care about the city and do much to make it a better place. Uh, what we don't need is an additional billboard that will detract from the character of Fall River. Please do all that you can to preserve the city's character and deny this position, this petition. Sincerely, Alfred J. Lima. And I think that was the only correspondent we had.
That was the only one who reviewed that today.
Okay. All right. So you want to make a motion to take it to the.
Well, what I would like to ask, just so that I don't have to have them come down next time, if you have any specific sign questions and want to ask them now while the professionals are here to answer those questions, you know, I would, I would ask you to do so.
So I'm just, go ahead, Joe.
The only question I have is obviously it's going to be all of the lighting.
No nits and no, no shooting of lasers and.
Correct.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, under Mass DOT regulations, we mean all those.
It falls within that buffer that the state controls anyways along the side of the state road.
Absolutely, yeah. No more than .3-foot candles above ambient light.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Yes, of course you can.
So I, I have a statement. My name is Anthony Cudero, 171 Pleasant Street. I have the state come down and see whether or not this would be allowed. There's a whole set of rules. I don't profess to know the rules. But ultimately, what I heard from the engineer that oversees the billboards in our area was that I need some correspondence from this board or from the city before I can go to town. So I'm a little confused.
You know, we ran into this, and I think it was Frank, was it?
Probably Frank. Frank's the only one that has it.
The big blue ball, whatever the.
Yep.
That, we ran into that with, when he wanted to do his sign. And my recollection was there was communication between, and I think it was Jim Hotnet at the time, between Hotnet and somebody from the outdoor advertising board that this was coming, this was on the agenda, uh, but the board couldn't act based on our, um, ordinances because it's, specific language hadn't changed because it required the outdoor advertising board to say, you've got your permit in hand.
Right.
I mean, well, I, I don't, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Um, so my, my kind of thought is, I can't speak for the board, how we're going to vote, but it seems, a special permit seems to be in line to make it work. If somebody says no.
Would I make a motion?
What are you going to make a motion?
Well, that's what I said, to make it a condition that you're not granting, you're putting a condition on it so we don't have the special permit until we go get that permit. It just, it would save us from having to come back. And it gives us something to go to them with.
I do have a question, if I could.
Who's that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Bob Messier, Hanson Mess?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm with Daktronics, the manufacturer of the display. Question I had, when you were just referring to that coming up, was that 10 years ago?
Yes.
More recent?
No.
Okay. 10 years ago, it's the pilot program Mass DOT did. It was the very beginning.
Yep.
So things have changed, but, um, like Tony was saying, typically, I've done a lot of these with other customers throughout the state. Typically, Mass DOT needs your, whatever it is, is a special permit, did he tell you?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they, I don't, I doubt if Dat, Mass DOT said they just want authorization from the local zoning to make it work.
Correct, just before they go down.
So if you want to, so listen, I'm one voice. If you want to make, somebody wants to make a motion to grant on a contingent basis that DOT issue, that's fine. If, if that'll, if that'll move it along, if.
So then it becomes in. With the condition then.
Yeah, that they get it. They don't.
Prior to state approval.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay. So, so how about that? Does that work?
Does, it then, it becomes encumbered upon our building official?
Yeah, it will get granted the permit until they.
The condition is, the condition is somebody has to show up with that.
Permit in hand.
With the permit in hand, uh, such permit is valid and outstanding from the outdoor advertising authority. So they say, yes, I've got it. The local zoning board said, yes, I can have a special permit with these parameters and go ahead and put your sign up.
That's my motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Yes.
No, that's ahead. Okay. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins? Dan Dupierre?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes.
Thank you all very much.
So we'll see if that works.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a nice holiday.
Thank you.
You too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Wait a minute, you don't have number eight. Number eight.
No, go on.
I'm so late for something.
26 Brow Street, 44 and 46, um, lot N 26, 58, 61. Wait a minute, Dan, didn't you do this plan? Didn't I? No, no. Variance request to re-divide the properties into three. Variance request to redivide the properties into three lots, modifying the boundary line to leave two existing dwellings on lot N twenty-five-eight and sixty-one, two existing dwellings on lot N twenty-six, and to convey a seventeen-square-foot parcel to N twenty-six at the rear fence line waiving requirements in the CBD district.
Chairman, members of the board, Attorney John Brown, two sixty-seven, Derry Street in Florida. This, Mr. De Silva, the applicant, came back, came here in two thousand fourteen, and this particular petition was granted. However, the, let me see, the petition, the rights in the petition weren't exercised until last year, twenty twenty. So the rights in the petition were waived. Does that make any sense?
It was a variance, I did, but it expired.
Oh, good.
Didn't act.
So you didn't act on the variance.
It was acted on last year, twenty twenty. So it was too late. Supposed to be within a year, I think.
Yeah.
Correct.
But you're saying it was acted on.
It was acted on July of twenty twenty.
But outside the, beyond the expiration date.
Okay, I got it. So you're back to get it. So, okay, go ahead, Attorney John Brown.
So the applicant is here with the same request back in two thousand fourteen to redivide the properties into three lots, leaving the existing dwellings in each respective lot. It's basically just to conform, just to conform the boundary lines.
All right. So, okay, there will be, or there is a form A plan that's been prepared?
Correct.
Okay. And this is, and this is the configuration?
Yes.
At what we're looking at here. And that seventeen, what is it, seventeen, how many square feet, seventeen square foot goes to in the rear? So you're going to convey seventeen.
Seventeen square feet.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. It's a lot.
Looking for it.
It's going to, here it is, seventeen square, lot B, area to be conveyed to N twenty-six. N twenty-six.
Obviously, it came from this, yes.
N twenty-six right here. So that, this piece goes here. Okay, I got it. All right. Members of the board, any questions?
Do we have the?
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to get to you. Let me ask the board if they have anything that they want.
Do we have the previous ruling?
So was the seventeen-feet part of the previous decision as well?
Yes. So it's identical.
It's identical, okay.
The only thing that I would ask the board to consider if we're thinking of granting it is that we do the permanent markers, boundary lines, so we know where the lots are.
Do we have the previous one?
I don't see it here. Do you have it?
So actually, the way that is now, that's the way it's been for forty years. This was, so it is already marked by, you know, well, there's a stone wall, not a stone wall, but it's in the block wall as one of the corners. So it's already pretty much, you know, not going to go anywhere.
Okay, so let me, let me explain why, I understand what you're saying and I don't want the expense, but my experience has been, and this board's experience and the building inspector's experience has been, if we don't have that as part of the grant to say we want the boundary lines, at least the points established, we're getting into arguments and they're calling the building inspector and I want to avoid.
That's not a problem.
Telephone calls from the building inspector on Saturday and Sunday that the police are at a certain location because they don't know where the corners are.
Totally reasonable request.
You have four, you have four points to mark between the two.
I'm just a little.
Yeah, that's Chris Kelly.
Now, N twenty, is that number forty-four?
I think twenty-six.
What's this?
Forty-four and forty.
Oh, I believe fifty-eight.
Eight is forty-four.
Yeah.
It's forty-four.
Fifty-one is forty-six.
And that is landlord then?
Yes, that's correct. That belongs to the same owner. So I gave that, all that wedge, that piece of wedge, I gave it to the lady next door, you know, because I had, I was not aware that that was my, that was part of my property. I was not aware till I.
So do we need an easement to get the in and out?
No, no, it actually, it's, if we were to remove that, it would put a hardship on her because she uses that area as parking. If I was to take it back as what originally was stated as, it really adds no value to me. It doesn't do anything other than just gives me a wedge of real estate that is basically worthless. By doing it this way, and this, by the way, with that marker there, that line was what was instituted from probably her father more than forty-some years ago. So by doing, by making this correction, we get four cars off of a road that you can't even find a parking spot on a regular day. So it helps out tremendously, you know, but again, to me, it has no value at all to me. But to her, like I said, she would, it would be a hardship for her family, definitely.
Okay. So this gentleman and this woman in the back, and the woman in the back is, madam, will you tell me who you are and what you'd like to say?
I'm Rukin Yumar. My name.
Oh.
My name is Rukin Yumar.
Yes, sir. Where do you live?
I'm one of the twenty Brow Street.
And fourteen.
And fourteen is one of Brow Street.
Twenty. Wait, wait, let me find it, let me find it. Twenty fourteen, okay. You're, you're, you're to the west. I got it, I see, next to Fifth Street.
Yes.
Okay. So see where it says no parking and M that.
It's house on the side of his.
It's on the side.
Yeah.
You've got twenty-eight, N twenty-seven, and N twenty-nine.
No, fourteen and.
No, no.
Fourteen and.
Can you, want to come up here for a minute? I'll show you what I. So if I'm reading this right, I think these are your two, you're right, you're twenty and fourteen.
Yes, it's one property, it's a six family.
One property is too long.
No, but the assessors have it as two lots, so these two are you. This looks like number twenty, this looks like number fourteen?
Yeah, but it's one house, it's a six family.
No, that's not it.
And this is their property.
Yes.
And this is their, so what they're planning on doing is just this piece in between, it just goes, it just goes right here.
I can explain to you right now. You see this line over here?
Yeah, that's not, yes.
He moves this in two thousand thirteen. When I bought the house, he's on a same deal with me. I get the house. For a severe, this was used to be one line. He take me nine feet by fifty-some feet.
Yes.
That's like close to five hundred square feet.
Yes.
And now he short another seventeen feet. So this is now like forty years ago. And over here.
No, no, but that's not, okay, so let me just say this. I don't, Attorney Brown, I don't think we're dealing with N twenty-six other than, we're not dealing with the westerly boundary, we're only dealing with the, with the boundary line in between.
Correct.
On the east, right here.
About the driveway before, he wanted it earlier, and my cousin is, is the owner of that other property, they didn't want to give it back because it's been more than forty years. My aunt owned that house before.
Okay. So, so let me, I'll listen to you, you're going to direct the bottom, but I want to make sure you understand what's.
We want to know what the seventeen square feet.
What I want to say, those lines is not like that for forty years, not.
It was.
He moved those, when I bought that week, he put a severe on.
Yes.
He moved those, you can see that line, nine feet, he take nine feet by fifty-some.
It's right here, it's right here, nine feet by fifty-five.
Yes. Before, before, he has a line right here. He's, he's can't even pass the house. Why not? He said this is yours, it's okay, I give it to you.
When we bought the house, it was.
I put a new fence over here, so.
I got it, I understand, but that's not what's.
It's not like forty years ago.
Okay. What we're dealing with.
We want to know what the seventeen square feet.
Right here, I'm going to show you.
He's trying to take from.
He's not taking it from anyone, he's giving it to this one. It's coming off, so here's your lot, he's dealing with this property over here.
So it's not, what we want to know.
So why I'm here?
If it's, if, if.
Because you're in the bottom, you were notified because you lived there.
Yeah, we want, we want, we want to know if it's something that he wants from ours.
No.
Or he took from ours.
No.
And when we bought the property.
No, ma'am.
He took nine feet from us.
As I understand it, I understand, I understand that clearly, but that's not what's before the board, it's within an internal line from where, see these two properties?
Correct.
So instead of it being this, it's coming, this piece, triangular piece, is going to this piece of property, to number forty-four. Nothing to do with your side. It's all happening over here on this side.
Okay.
You want to, okay?
Yeah, I just don't think it's fair that he took property from us that was already asked.
Wait, no, no, wait, wait, I'm not getting, no, no, sir, this is the zoning board of appeals. I am not getting into.
You know, you know you're there.
Okay.
Right, because you don't get the house, you get like the severe on that week, you take those nine feet by fifty-some feet from it, you know that.
Thank you for coming on.
You get the facts right.
Thank you. No, but sir, sir.
I just wanted to clarify that he wasn't.
So you know that.
I know, I hear that loud and clear. And what?
And the other, the other house.
Yes.
Oh, that's nothing with us, let's go. It's not, it's. My, I'm like.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
You don't know what you're talking about.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Excuse me, this is the zoning board of appeals, if there's an issue, you should hire a lawyer and you should deal with that issue.
I have a lawyer.
The issue before, the issue before the board this evening is your request to validate a variance that was granted a couple of years ago and grant the seventeen feet to change that boundary line. Is that correct, John?
Correct.
Okay. So that's all that this board is going to entertain this evening. So is there anyone else in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed to this petition? Members of the board, what do you want to do? And if you want, if you're going to grant, then I think that condition should be that you have the points be established in a affidavit filed and recorded at the registry of deeds that they complied, similarly to what we do when we say they should be split. The utility should be split, so the same thing that they put the boundary lines in, the boundary points in on a permanent basis. In that way, they've complied with the express condition of the variance. Or if we think that they haven't met it, then the petition should be denied.
If I may, just pertaining to the seventeen square feet.
Yeah.
Okay. What about? That's where the marker is going to go.
Well, you're establishing this, this new property line between twenty-six and forty-four, forty-six.
Correct.
So I would think that you would, you would want to have at the northern, northerly most established, you would probably want, we've got the six-point-two offset, those two points, because that's going to be, that's, what I'm hearing is nine feet and fifty-five feet, you're going to be arguing about six-point-two feet. So get that settled, because I don't want to hear about it again, and I don't want the building inspector calling me. And the same thing with that line coming down to Brow Street, so someone can find one point, two points, three point, four, Joe was correct, four points along the line to establish what the line is, and you avoid the whole conflict issue.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it to be fresh, but I mean, this, this is an actual situation that happened a couple of weeks ago.
I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused here. So the four, the four points you're talking about are not solid ones?
Yes.
So you want, but.
Yeah, you want to establish that line.
I got you.
Has, is this a result of a physical survey?
Yes, it is.
It has to be, Kelly stamped it.
Then it's easy.
Okay, yes, that won't be, yes, that's correct.
Whether they do it with pens or however.
Does it make it easier to know that there's a fence there or?
Is there?
No, they just got to mark it anyways.
No, but you want something permanent. I don't, I don't want a state that's going to, and then ones out there on Saturday with the police.
I'm sorry, but like in, like the front and the back part of it, they're both on concrete, so he can just drive a pin in.
They can do it then?
Listen.
And that's typical and.
As long as it's done.
Chris Kelly knows what to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Greg Dennis knows what to do.
Yeah, Greg's.
So whatever they need, that's whatever is typical and.
But you will have to file. If we grant it, if we grant it, there's going to be a condition that we want an affidavit recorded at the registry of deeds that you've complied with that part of the variance.
Okay.
So the world knows that you're signing under the pains and penalties perjury, that you complied with it, and the four points are there. So if there's an argument, somebody's going to be able to go out there and find the four points and say, here's the property line, Mister forty-four, forty-six, Mister twenty-six, stop your complaining.
Yeah. Right, that avoids what we just saw. He doesn't know what he's talking.
No, no, we're not getting there. I'm not, we're not going to address that.
Not taking sides.
So, do we have a motion to grant, motion to deny?
Motion to grant on the conditions specified that the four points of delineation along the break in the property line be marked permanently, and that an affidavit to the said same is placed on file with the registry of deeds.
Thank you. Okay, so that's Joe's motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor. John Frank, yes.
Yes.
Jim Corkins, Dan Dupere.
Yes.
Joe Ferrera.
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, too.
So we have a memo, agenda item number nine, we have a memo from the city planner, William Kenny, regarding proposed amendment to the zoning board of appeals rules and regulations. Excuse me. Can you take it outside, please? Thank you. So the memo from Mr. Kenny, the director of planning, says, dear chair and members, "Dear Chair and members, the current version of the Zoning Board of Appeals Rules and Regulations, most recently revised, revised June 20, 2019, provides in part as follows. Deadline, all completed applications must be submitted to the planning director by the 14th of the month preceding the month in which the application will be heard, i.e. submission would be required by March 14th for the April meeting. Petitions filed after the 14th but no later than the 20th may, at the request of the applicant, be placed on the agenda for the following month's meeting, provided the applicant pays in addition to the applicant's fee, a late fee of $125. Where the 14th or the 20th falls on the day when the city offices are closed, the next business day will serve as the deadline. The planning director and staff propose that the board amend the foregoing to read as follows. Deadline, applications must be filed with the planning department by the 14th of the month preceding the month in which the applicant, application will be heard, e.g., submission would be required by March 14th for the April meeting. When the 14th falls on a day when the city offices are closed, the next business day will serve as the deadline. Only complete applications will be accepted for filing, period. Discussion, under current procedure, since the penalty for late filing is so small, the effective deadline for filing, excuse me, is the 20th of the month. Even if the penalties were significantly increased, allowing filing of applications later than the 14th of the month puts unnecessary time pressures on staff and risks late publication mailing of notices. If the board adopts the proposed change, it is suggested that the board announce that change will be effective starting with the January 2020 hearing date so that there will be only one deadline for that hearing, namely December 14, 2021." So that was the discussion that Director of Planning Bill Kenny and his staff had concerning this late filing for the extra days for $125, that it's more, more work than what it's worth, so just have a deadline of the 14th and that's it. Because it's just a... And Christine, and Christine can attest that it's difficult to...
Could I say a few words?
Yeah, yes, of course.
Just the dates on that last paragraph, 2020.
2022, did I say 2020?
No, for January.
For January 2021.
It would go into effect starting in January. So because of the...
22.
Okay, that's, that makes sense.
So it's the 14th.
The 14th.
It's always the 14th.
If you're not there by 5 o'clock before she's running out the door, then you're out of luck, you're on next month.
Yeah, a lot of towns do that.
We are the only board.